Oh, so that's over.
I will now call to order the meeting of the Omaha Planning Board. The Planning Board members that are here today are Sidney Franklin, Jeff Moore, Patrick Morris, Michael Pate, Jorge Sotolongo, David Roseacker, Vice Chair, and I am Greg Rosenbaum, Chairman. Members of the city staff that are in attendance today are Dave Fanslaw, Planning Director, Eric England, Assistant Planning Director, Mike Carter, Current Planning Manager, Robert LaRocco, Planning Board Administrator, Jennifer Taylor of the City Law Department, and Lisa Agins is our Recording Secretary. Our rules of procedure are as follows. Notice of this hearing has been published. Copies of today's agenda are located on the table in front of us. You are welcome to come down and pick one up. The cases on the consent agenda will be heard first. Consent cases are perceived by the Planning Board to be non-controversial, have been, have already been heard, or been recommended for layover, and therefore will be read and voted on without the opportunity for your testimony. If you wish to testify, you may remove the case from the consent agenda. When each consent case is read, I will ask if anyone wants the case removed. If you do, please stand up and say so, and the case will be removed. This case will then be heard in the order in which it appears on the regular agenda after we go through the consent cases. When the case is heard, you will have the opportunity to come to the podium, clearly state your name and address, and give your testimony at that time. When hearing cases on the regular agenda, the Board will first hear from the applicant. After the applicant states their case, we will hear from the proponents, and then we will hear from the opponents. After both sides are heard, the public hearing will be closed, and no additional testimony will be permitted unless a Board member requests additional information. When at the podium, please clearly state your name, address, and whom you are representing for the record. Your testimony is very important to us. In the interest of time and courtesy to others, please be short and to the point. We will try to limit each case to ten minutes. Those directly involved in the case, please speak first. We request that large groups select a spokesperson to represent that group, therefore eliminating repetitive testimony. When giving testimony, please provide new information and try not to repeat what has been previously said. We do ask that all speakers and others be treated with courtesy and with respect. In that regard, please remain silent while seated, and please turn off your cell phones. Our decision to approve, deny, or continue a case made here today will be forwarded to the City Council for another public hearing and final disposition by the City Council. Conditional use permits are an exception to this rule. The Board's decision made here today on conditional use permits are final and not forwarded to the City Council. Lastly, upon the advice of the Law Department, all communications to Board members from attorneys or other interested parties should be transmitted through the Planning Department so that they are made a part of the public record. The Department will then transmit all that information to the Board as well as to the rest of the public. Rezoning matters are an exception to this rule. A copy, a current copy of the Nebraska Open Meetings Act can be found in a white binder on the east wall of this room. And there are no changes to the consent agenda, so I'm going to get started with the consent Agenda item number three, case C3-21-92. Applicant, Planning Department, on behalf of the City of Omaha, it is on consent for approval. Request: Approval of a disposition of city-owned property under community development law. Location: 2238 Ohio Street. Does anyone wish to have this removed? Okay, seeing none. Agenda item number four, case C3-21-93. Applicant, Planning Department, on behalf of the City of Omaha, it is on for layover. Request: Approval of the disposition of city-owned property under community development law. Location: 6506 North 51st Plaza. Does anyone wish to have this removed? We do? You want that removed? Okay, we will do so. Case number four. Agenda item number five, case C3-21-94. Applicant, Planning Department, on behalf of the City of Omaha, it is on for approval. Request: Approval of the disposition of city-owned property under community development law. Location: 3201, 3203, 3205, 3207, 3215, 3219, and 3221 Corby Street. Does anyone wish to have this removed? Okay, seeing none. Agenda item number six, case C3-21-95. Applicant, Planning Department, on behalf of the City of Omaha, it is on for approval. Request: Approval of amendment to the future land use element of the city's master plan for open space to low-density residential. Location: 3030 and 3031 Upland Parkway. Does anyone wish to have this removed? Seeing none. Agenda item number eight, excuse me, case C10-21-23, C10-21-24, C10-21-3, C12-21-4. Applicant, Lockwood Development, it is on for layover. Request: Final plat approval of the crossroads, a subdivision inside city limits with a waiver to Section 5399 sidewalks, along with rezoning from R1, R8, LC, and GC to GC and MU. Repeal of the MCC overlay district from a portion of the site, and expansion of the ACI2 PL overlay district. Location: Northwest of 72nd and Dodge Street. Does anyone wish to have this removed? Okay, seeing none. Agenda item number 10, case C10-16-287, C12-21-100. Applicant, Ryan Sailor for Timberland Partners, it is on for approval. Request: Revised preliminary plat and final plat approval of Sundance, previously a portion of Avenue 1, a subdivision inside city limits with rezoning from AG to MU, along with a major amendment to the mixed-use development agreement for Avenue 1. Location: Northwest of 195th Street and HWS Cleveland Boulevard. Does anyone wish to have this removed? Okay, I thought so. It will be removed. Number 10. Agenda item number 11, case C10-21-101, C12-21-102. Applicant, Celebrity Homes Omaha, it is on for approval. Request: Preliminary plat approval of Majestic 178, a subdivision outside city limits with rezoning from AG to R4. Location: Southeast of 177th and State Street. Does anyone wish to have this removed? Okay, seeing none. Agenda item number 12, case C10-21-103, C12-21-104. Applicant, M180 LLC, it is on for approval. Request: Preliminary plat approval of Maple 180, a subdivision outside city limits with a waiver of Section 53914 Green Corners, along with rezoning from AG to DR and MU. Location: Northeast of 180th Street and West Maple Road. Anyone wish to have this removed? Okay, seeing none. Agenda item number 13, case C10-21-124, C12-21-105. Applicant, Thompson Dreeson and Donner Incorporated, it is on for approval. Request: Preliminary and final plat approval of Irvington Industrial Replat 3, a minor plat inside city limits, along with approval of the MCC overlay district. Location: 4845 North 90th. Anyone wish to have this removed? Seeing none. Agenda item number 14, case C10-21-106. Applicant, Nathan Jocelyn, it is on for approval. Request: Rezoning from R1 to R2. Location: 561 South 84th Street. Anyone wish to have this removed? Okay, seeing none. Agenda item number 15, case C10-21-107. Applicant, Alvin Okerik, I hope I said that correctly. It is on for approval. Request: Rezoning from DR to R5. Location: 8557 Boyd Street. Anyone wish to have this removed? Yes, okay, we will remove that. Agenda item number 15. Agenda item number 16, case C10-21-108, C10-21-109. Applicant, Nick Frohart, it is on for approval. Request: Rezoning from R2 to R5 with approval of the MCC major commercial corridor overlay district. Location: 9207 Blondo. Anyone wish to have this removed? Okay, seeing none. Agenda item number 17, case C10-06-166. Applicant, Lockwood Development, it is on for approval. Approval of a major amendment to the mixed-use development agreement for Candlewood Hills. Location: Southwest of 124th and Webster Plaza. Anyone wish to have this removed? Okay, seeing none. Agenda item number 18, case C10-21-110. Applicant, Planning Department, on behalf of the City of Omaha, it is on for approval. Request: Rezoning from GI and HI to R5. Location: 2902 Y Street, 3030 and 3031 Upland Parkway. Anyone wish to have this removed? Okay, seeing none, moving on. Agenda item number 19, case C10-21-111. Applicant, Kroger Inc., it is on for approval. Request: Rezoning from CC and GC to CC. Property is located within an ACI3 overlay district. Location: Southeast of 72nd Street and Military Road. Does anyone wish to have this? You do? Okay. Agenda item number 19 will be removed. Agenda item number 20, case C11-21-112. Applicant, Stephen Held, it is on for layover. Request: Approval of a PUR planned unit redevelopment overlay district. Location: Southwest of 33rd and Mason Streets. Does anyone wish to have this removed? I figured, okay. It will be removed. That's a, agenda item number 20, that was on for layover. Agenda item number 23, case C7-21-119. Applicant, Stonebridge Christian Church, it is on for approval. Request: Approval of a major amendment to the conditional use permit assumed to allow religious assembly in the R535 district. Location: 2702 North 61st Street. Does anyone wish to have this removed? Okay, seeing none. Agenda item number 24, case C7-18-53. Applicant, Ryan Lindquist, it is on for approval. Request: Approval of a major amendment to the conditional use permit to allow secondary education facilities in the R4 district. Location: 17800 George Miller Parkway. Anyone wish to have this removed? Seeing none. Agenda item number 26, case C7-5-216. Applicant, Stonebridge Christian Church, it is on for approval. Request: Approval of a major amendment to the conditional use permit to allow religious assembly in the R4 district. Location: 15801 Butler Ave. Anyone wish to have this removed? Seeing none. Agenda item number 27, case C7-21-122. Applicant, Bob Purcell, JTBLLC, it is on for layover. Request: Approval of a conditional use permit to allow indoor sports and recreation in the CC district. Location: 20320 Blondo Parkway. Does anyone wish to have this removed? Okay, seeing none. Those are the consent cases. Do we have a motion from the Board for the consent cases that are on for approval?
I motion for approval of agenda items number 3, 5, 6, 11, 12, 13, 14, 16, 17, 18, 23, 24, and 26.
We have a motion and a second. Lisa, will you please record the vote?
Franklin?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Pate?
Yes.
Sotolongo?
Yes.
Roseacker?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Okay, do we have a motion for the consent cases on for layover?
Motion to layover cases number 8 and 27.
We have a motion and a second. Lisa, will you please record the vote?
Roseacker?
Yes.
Franklin?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Pate?
Yes.
Sotolongo?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Motion approved.
So those cases that were on the agenda for consent, if they were left on consent, no, no further action will be taken today. If you came down for one of those cases, you can leave, or you are welcome to stay. It's up to you. We'll get started with the agenda. Case number one is on administrative only, so there will be no opportunity for public testimony. Agenda item number one, C10-21-29, C12-21-30. Applicant, Skyline Ridge Estates LLC. Request: Final plat approval of Serenity Estates, lots 1 through 21, outlots A and B, formerly known as Skyline Ridge Estates, a subdivision outside city limits, along with rezoning from AG to DR and R4. Location: Northwest of Skyline Drive and Old Center Road. Eric?
Yeah, this is the first phase final plat of Serenity Estates, formerly known as Skyline Ridge Estates. It includes 21 lots and two outlots. It's nearly identical to the approved preliminary plat, which was approved by City Council on March 9th. There are a few final items that will have to be finalized with the sub, final subdivision agreement prior to forwarding to City Council, but staff recommends approval of the rezoning from AG to DR and R4. Approval of the final plat subject to submission of an acceptable final subdivision agreement prior to City Council.
Any comments or questions from the Board? Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve rezoning from AG to DR and R4. Approval of final plat subject to submission of acceptable final subdivision agreement prior to forwarding the request to City Council.
We have a motion and a second. Lisa, will you please record the vote?
Moore?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Pate?
Yes.
Sotolongo?
Yes.
Roseacker?
Yes.
Franklin?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Okay, moving on. Agenda item number two, case C10-20-201, C12-20-202. Applicant, Ryan Blumpkin. Request: Revised preliminary plat and final plat approval of 77 and Dodge, lots 1 through 3, outlot A, a subdivision inside city limits with rezoning from GC and GI to CC, GC and GI, along with approval of the ACI2 area of civic importance overlay district for lot 1. Portions of the property are located within the Flood Fringe overlay district. Location: South of 77th and Dodge Streets. May we hear from the applicant, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Brent Keller, 1140 West Center Road, on behalf of the applicant. You may recall us at the last plane where we've been in front of you a couple times on this one. We had presented this option for this project, and if you remember the angst on the last time, the last time we discussed this was basically Farnham Street. So with Mr. Roseacker's recommendation, we did actually, we appreciate the city, they got on it. We, we met with them, and so before you today is a new revised preliminary and final plat. And the middle ground on all of this, so this was our original plat, original final plat where we had lots 1, 2, 3, 4, and 5 with the Farnham Street with the access. What's in your packets today is the workaround, which was having this, this turnaround or this roundabout, not having any access here, and not finally plating what used to be lots 1 and 2. And I understand, and I'll defer to Eric here in a minute, but while we're in concept and in theory, we're okay with that. There is a bit of a tweak, and this is just based on correspondence that we've had with Public Works, to actually do a roundabout versus a cul-de-sac at that area. Same concept, though. We would finally plat now what's, this is the revised preliminary and final, lots 1, 2, and 3, and then we're going to leave lots 4 and 5 standing alone for now, unplatted, until we can kind of figure out how to best use those. And obviously, one of your conditions is working with Public Works to get some sort of acceptable entry access to those lots when the time comes. So appreciate working with city staff. They really stepped up and met with us and, and kind of helped us meet timelines to make sure this all goes forward. But with that, we're here for any questions, and we appreciate your consideration.
Thank you. Any other proponents wishing to speak? Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Additional comments or questions from the Board? Eric?
Sure. Brent summarized it really well, you know, with the revised preliminary plat for the entirety of the site and then Phase 1 final plat. Yeah, obviously, it's a difficult situation with the, the existing traffic and the proposed increases in, in access points. So the elimination of the Farnham Street connection off of Rose Blumpkin is, is what city staff was looking for and, and is in support. If you have any specific questions, Public Works is here to answer any questions. Yeah, we had a, I didn't even fill the, the Board in the pre-meeting, but it, the Seminole had come in with, with a roundabout, and we made some changes, the cul-de-sac, so we'll just make those changes basically before the final plat proceeds to City Council for any documentation. But, you know, there's no substantial differentiation between the two. So unless you have any questions, and you can definitely ask them after I give the recommendation, but staff recommends approval of the rezoning from GC and GI to CC, GC and GI. Approval of the ACI2 overlay district for lot 5, previously lot 1. Approval of the revised preliminary plat subject to the nine conditions in the recommendation report, and approval of the final plat subject to meeting conditions of revised preliminary plat and submission of an acceptable final subdivision agreement prior to City Council.
Okay, do we have a motion?
I will move approval of the rezoning from GC and GI to CC, GC and GI. Approval of the ACI2 area civic importance overlay district for lot 5, previously lot 1. Approval of the revised preliminary plat subject to the nine conditions outlined in the report, and approval of the final plat subject to meeting the conditions of the revised preliminary plat, and submission of an acceptable final subdivision agreement prior to forwarding the request on to City Council.
We have a motion and a second. Lisa, will you please record the vote?
Morris?
Yes.
Pate?
Yes.
Sotolongo?
Yes.
Roseacker?
Before I do that, I just want to commend the applicant and the staff also on coming together and taking the bull by the horns and solving a problem. It's always good when we see everybody come together and come with the acceptable solutions. On that, I favor the vote yes.
Okay. Franklin?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you, Brent. Agenda, agenda item number four, case C3-21-93. Applicant, Planning Department, on behalf of the City of Omaha. Request: Approval of the disposition of city-owned property under community development law. Location: 6506 North 51st Plaza. Eric, are you going to be the applicant?
Yep, I'll present on behalf of the city. This request is for the disposition of a slightly under 16-acre parcel known as a former Wintergreen Apartments, which was a 213-unit apartment complex that was torn down in 2006. The city has owned this ground for a number of years. What's before you on the agenda would say yes to disposing it. The city held an RFP and has selected Habitat for Humanity for development of the site. We continue to meet with the development team, and there will be other requests in the, in the future regarding rezoning and plating, but basically looking, you know, 65 to 70 single-family homes can be a great infill project. I, I will leave it at that. The applicant has requested a layover, which we are acceptable to, and I can answer any questions after the public hearing.
Thank you, Eric. Any other proponents wishing to speak? Seeing none, are there any opponents? Come on down, give your name and address, please.
Is it this one? Can you hear me?
Yes.
Joy Bartling, 4966 Newport Avenue. I sit just adjacent to the old Wintergreen Apartments. And it's not that I oppose it completely, it's that I have to look at the development and how it's going to affect what we do at Scatter Joy Acres. We've already had erosion control problems in that area that come from the housing area to the north of us. We've had sewer that is backed up and gone into the creek that provide water for our animals. And so that is a huge, and I know that there's city codes now that are in effect that weren't there back in, when the housing development was originally built to the north of me. So I just ask that we make sure that those are enforced and followed. It's going to be more roof chop and concrete that's going to be there, which is going to change a lot of the, you know, now it's dirt, and unfortunately, I'm just as frustrated as the rest of the neighborhood at the kids and the people who are bringing trucks and trailers in with four-wheelers and tearing up the beautiful property. And so it needs to be maintained. Some of my other concerns is we've been having vandalism at the ranch due to these people that are coming in with their four-wheelers. I need to make sure that we are protected, and how is this property going to be, is it going to be fenced? Is it going to be, you know, how are we going to protect these people from jumping in and unlocking gates? And my animals are out on Sorensen Parkway, and then the city's mad at me because my animals are loose. So we have to make sure there's a lot of procedures and protocols that are put in place to protect us. And then in the development stage, I know there is an egress that comes from Forest Lawn through to our property. Is that going to be put in place, or is it not going to be put in place? Because then that changes the flow of traffic, and we already have gravel roads that have washboards on them. And so if that's the case, then we need to look into how do we improve those roads that are down there. That's all I have.
Thank you, Joy. Any other opponents wishing to speak? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Additional comments, questions from the Board? Okay, Eric, did you want to address some of?
Yeah.
Joy's concerns here?
Yep, I'll start with one of her last comments. Forest Lawn Avenue is, would be improved to a paved street that would stub to about the... to a paved street that would stub to about the, basically, the southwestern portion or the southern portion of Joy's site. You know, yes, there is some currently, there's some tough roads in this vicinity, and this infill project can be a great, you know, re-establishment of a neighborhood and bring a lot of positives to the neighborhood. Now, with that, there are, you know, construction phases that occur, but I think, you know, for that, the short pains of construction, seasons and putting in streets and sewer infrastructure in houses over the long term will be a great benefit for the area. We are currently working with the applicant on their specific proposal of where all the street connections will be and connect to. Yes, there are several new policies, well, not new policies, but several policies that are in place that were not previously in place when this area developed. So, you know, much of the area lacking, you know, the typical infrastructure. There are stormwater requirements, so with the increased pavement, there is detention requirements and treatment of storm runoff that will be required, and there will be, you know, maintained on their site and established. So, you know, I think it'll be all positives. We definitely encourage the applicant Habitat to continue to work with neighbors, including Joy and her side, as well as all the other property owners surrounding the site, and we know they do a good job with that. So if those conversations have not started yet, they definitely will be coming moving forward. So with that, unless you have any, yeah, go ahead.
When she mentioned ATVs and that sort of thing on that lot, is that something where she can call the city and have, go ahead, I'm sorry?
Yeah, obviously, we have code enforcement. Now, our inspectors come out, you know, certain times, I guess if it's more of an immediate problem, calling nine-one-one and the police could be the better solution because they wouldn't be trespassing, you know, they don't have permission from the city to go out there ATV-ing on the site. So, yes, code enforcement can deal with some things, but probably not that issue.
Okay.
But that, staff recommends layover.
Any other questions, comments from the board? Do we have a motion?
I recommend layover.
We have a motion and a second. Lisa, will you record the vote, please?
Pete?
Yes.
Sotolongo?
Yes.
Rosacker?
Yes.
Franklin?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Motion approved for layover.
Agenda item number seven, case C-three dash twenty-one dash ninety-six, applicant Planning Department on behalf of the City of Omaha, request approval of the Blackstone East Mixed-Use Building TIF redevelopment project plan. Location, southeast of Thirty-eighth and Farnham Streets. And Don, you're presenting.
Yes, good afternoon. Don Seaton, Omaha City Planning. This project is in the Blackstone District, just immediately west of the, this is the Blackstone Hotel, just west of the Blackstone Hotel. Pair of parcels at the Thirty-eighth and Farnham location. One is currently a surface parking facility. The other is a, contains a four-story apartment building with six units. The site will be cleared and a new mixed-use building will be constructed. Be a large nine-story building, about twenty thousand square feet of first-floor commercial retail space and approximately one hundred and sixty-one market-rate apartment units. The overall development project includes the construction of a public parking structure with about four hundred stalls. This will be split off from the project by a condominium plat and sold to the city. It'll be city-owned, city-operated parking structure within the building. Let me show you the building, at least a preliminary design. So the finances of the parking garage are completely separate from the TIF project and the financial structure of the TIF project you're reviewing today. This project includes five hundred and fifty thousand dollars in public improvements, and the developers are also going to be making a sixty-two thousand dollar contribution into the Midtown Public Improvement Fund. Developers are basically a, it's kind of a collaboration of Clarity and Greenslake Development Companies, but it's a variety of investors. Tom McClay is the point person and project manager. Total project investment is approximately forty-three and a half million dollars. They're requesting six million, two hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars in TIF support. The project meets the required criteria of the TIF program. It's been reviewed and approved by the City TIF Committee. It's an appropriate use for the area. I think it'll be a good addition to Blackstone. The parking structure was definitely needed. We ask for your approval, and I would note also that approval of the TIF financing does not release the developer from the need or the obligation to comply with all city zoning requirements, including the design overlay zone, the design standards for the site. And they are working very well with our city urban design staff to give us a final product. It'll be something everybody can enjoy. Thank you.
Thank you, Don. Any other proponents wishing to speak?
Good afternoon. Tom McClay, thirty-eight fourteen Farnham, Suite two oh one, here in Omaha. Here, the owner and developer of the project, truly to answer any questions. I do have a little bit newer rendering to show for folks.
Yeah, there we go.
That is the Farnham, the Farnham Street side. I sandbagged Don there, sorry about that. It's hot off the presses. This is the Farnham Street side. You can see the lower-level retail with the apartments on the above, as well as then the Harney Street side with the parking on the lower levels, as well as then the apartments above. Happy to answer any questions anyone might have. Thanks. Yeah.
Is that like a mesh screen or glass on the second?
It's a, it's a mesh screen. That's correct. This is actually showing it at dusk, so you can see a little. During the day, it won't be as transparent.
The parking is great. I'm glad to see it. You've got a hundred and sixty units for apartments, is that correct?
Yeah, a hundred and sixty-one.
Hundred and sixty-one. So will the residents of those apartments have guaranteed spots in that parking, then, since it's a public parking structure? Or how will that work?
They don't have guaranteed spots, but like any other parking structure in the city, there are monthly lease options, which exist in, I think, virtually all apartment structures. We have continued to work with Ken Smith, the parking czar, as I call him, throughout the process.
And those will be identified on each parking spot, then? Okay. Thanks.
Okay, thank you, Tom.
Thanks.
Any other proponents wishing to speak?
Troy Anderson, Deputy Chief of Staff, City of Omaha Mayor's Office, just here to answer any questions that may arise as it relates to the public parking garage.
Thank you, Troy. Any other proponents? Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Any comments, questions from the board? Eric, did you want to add anything?
Just, you know, there had been a previous rezoning to MBD. As Don had mentioned, we continue to work with the development team on finalization of plans, and most likely, there will be a PUR that comes before this board and City Council moving forward in the future. But obviously, it's a great project, very excited. Staff recommends approval.
Do we have a motion? We have a motion and a second. Lisa, will you record the vote, please?
Sotolongo?
Yes.
Rosacker?
Yes.
Franklin?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Pete?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Okay, moving on. Agenda item number nine, case C-ten dash twenty-one dash ninety-seven, C-ten dash twenty-one dash ninety-eight, C-twelve dash twenty-one dash ninety-nine, applicant University of Nebraska Board of Regents, request preliminary plat approval of UNMC Saddle Creek Campus, a subdivision inside city limits with rezoning from G-O, G-C, and G-I to C-C, TOD dash two MX and TOD dash one MX, along with repeal of the A-C-I-two overlay district for a portion of the site. Location, southwest of Farnham Street and Saddle Creek Road. Larry?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Larry Jovan, one hundred and fourteen forty West Center Road, appearing on behalf of the University of Nebraska Board of Regents. With me today is Brian Spencer and Ryan Lawson of UNMC, as well as Luke Weatherly, Katie Underwood, and Mike Pernicki of Olson Associates. They're the consulting engineers on this particular project. Start up by showing you the existing conditions and where this project is bound. As you know, the main medical center campus is here. It's separated by Saddle Creek with the proposed development, which is bound by Farnham on the north, Forty-Eighth Street on the west, of course, Saddle Creek on the east, and then Leavenworth on the south. There's a variety of uses that are currently in this particular location. There's the medical campus, obviously, to the east. There's residential uses to the west and to the north. And then there's commercial retail uses also to the north and to the south of the proposed development. The existing zoning in this particular area is a little mixed. It's a combination of general industrial, general office, as well as general commercial, all with an A-C-I-two overlay district on it. The, this proposed preliminary plat and rezonings to clean up all of that mix-in zoning and get it more where this campus is heading as far as a redevelopment opportunity. As far as the preliminary plat, this is about twenty-three acres, and this is, again, the, what they're calling the Saddle Creek Campus, which is west of Saddle Creek. There are six proposed lots. I've got them listed here. Got Lot One, Two, Three, Four, Five, and Six. And they will all be buildable lots, and of course, we talked about the rezoning. And the proposed rezoning, again, is to take it away from the general industrial, the general commercial, and the general office into the new TOD zoning. So what we have before you today is Lot One being the TOD One with the mixed-use designation on it. Then we have Lots Two, Three, Four, and Five, which isn't highlighted, but those will have the TOD Two mixed-use designation on them. And then Lot Six will be C-C with the A-C-I-two overlay district on that particular lot. So I'll share with you the, really, the overall campus master plan. This shows the med center here on the east side of Saddle Creek, and then it shows the proposed development here on the west side of Saddle Creek. This is, on the west side, what you're seeing today is really a conceptual master plan. The med center has been, put out an RFP to have developers look at and propose what they might do with this particular site. That selection process is still ongoing. So again, this is what it might look like. I would point out a couple key components that will be part of the master plan for the Saddle Creek development, and that is, there's an administrative center here, which is shown in orange. That's what they call Building One. There's a parking structure here, right next to it, shown as Building Number Nine. And then down here in purple is Building Ten, and that's an innovation building for incubator-type businesses. So that, those are kind of the main key components. I did want to, I guess this is a better one to show, administrative parking, innovative buildings there. I did want to show you that there is this proposed lid park over Saddle Creek Dodge that will connect the main med center campus with the Saddle Creek Campus, which will be a nice pedestrian feature over the top of Saddle Creek. Again, that's all conceptual, but we're working with Public Works in the city to establish that possibility. As far as the street systems, there will be Forty-Sixth Street that will be from, located between Farnham and come out here on Saddle Creek. Forty-Eighth Street will be realigned. Emily Street will be constructed. There's also an unnamed street named Street A for now. It's unnamed. There will be some reconfiguration of Farnham and Saddle Creek with potential. We're working with Public Works right now to determine whether Farnham will be a two-way street all the time as opposed to one-way, one-way in the AM, one-way in the PM as it exists today. So we're working with Public Works and planning on that particular item. Then there's pedestrian and bicycle connectivity here. What's shown in red along Forty-Sixth Street is the bike trail or bike lane that's being proposed. And then we're working with planning and the city to establish a pedestrian connection from Saddle Creek to Forty-S sixth, down Forty-Sixth Street, and then up Forty-Eighth Street, and make it a connection into the neighborhood on Howard Street. So that's really the, kind of the long and short of it. We did have a neighborhood meeting, a formal one, April twenty-sixth. I know there's, Mr. Spencer of the UNMC has had many, many conversations with the surrounding neighborhoods and surrounding neighborhood associations. So there's been a lot of communication over the last couple of years, going back and forth. The anticipated construction start is in the spring or summer of 2022, and we think this is just a great project for the med center campus, as well as the surrounding areas and the citizens of Omaha. So we reviewed the recommendation report. We find the same acceptable, and we're here for questions, the development team, myself. So with that, happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Larry.
Thank you.
Any other proponents wishing to speak? Seeing none, are there any opponents? Come forward, sir. Give your name and address.
My name is Lynn Leach. Thank you, by the way, for hearing me.
Sure.
It's a pleasure to be here. Lynn Leach is my name. Thirteen?
Address?
Address thirteen thirty-six Pelican Bay Place, Lincoln. I own ace rent-to-own and a building that's, I think, right in the middle of that. It is my second store and one that is paramount to the success of our company, a building that my dad and I bought in nineteen eighty-five when it was a, yes. It's, it's right here. You can see it better on this particular map. It says Leach Investment Properties, awfully small printing, but that is my building right there. We bought that building back in nineteen eighty-five when it was a shell and the developer had run out of money, finished it, and turned it into the second-ever ace rent-to-own and our only expansion store at that time. It still remains one of our best stores and most important stores, and also is the last connection I have to my father, who's not with us anymore, but helped me to get the business started and to develop it. I have not heard anything from anybody about what would happen to my business, what would happen to my building, and how this would affect me. But it seems that, from what I can understand, the zoning proposal here is on my property as well, which I am not a proponent of. So I'm asking that, because I haven't been contacted and I don't, I don't know what the plans are for my property, and it's absolutely paramount to my business, I'm very concerned about changing zoning on my property, which I haven't even requested or have been a part of.
Just to address it right now, actually, your property is excluded from the plat boundaries, so it is not being rezoned. I can't speak for any of the, you know, the development. I'll leave that to the developer, but your actual property is not included in the plat boundaries or the rezoning.
And would it be surrounded in every way by that and with these proposed roads and so on that are being proposed? Would that, wouldn't that change my property a great deal?
I'll let the development team answer that question.
Thank you, Lynn.
Thank you.
We'll address that here in a minute.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Any others in opposition wishing to speak? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Larry, did you want to come up and address some of Lynn's issues or all of his issues, I should say?
Yes, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Larry Jovan, one hundred and fourteen forty West Center Road, appearing on behalf of the applicant. Yes, as you can see, this is a larger map here. The gentleman's property is excluded from the zoning and the plat. I would tell you that based upon what's going on here and the proposed development, I would suggest that his value of his property will probably increase dramatically based upon what's going on around him with the new development and the redevelopment. You know, as you know before, it was a steel casting site and very heavy industrial in use. Obviously, this proposed development will bring this into a first-class development. So I think it will be a vast improvement for what he has seen in the past with respect to the surrounding area. So he is excluded from both the zoning and the plating. So it shouldn't negatively impact him whatsoever.
He fronts Saddle Creek there.
Correct.
Any road changes to the west of his property that will give him better access or the same access?
Yeah, well, 46th Street will be constructed. So if you look at the aerial. There it is, right there. If you look at the aerial photograph right now, 46th Street doesn't even exist. So this is just, I think it's an old abandoned railroad right-of-way. So what's going to occur here at this particular location is he's going to have, you know, new roadway, 46th Street, extending all the way from Farnham Street down to 48th Street as it connects into Saddle Creek. So I believe that the transportation system will be significantly enhanced with this particular redevelopment project.
Larry, is his business, I can't tell what lot that is, you know, just on that map right there. Is this the one that's below the yellow?
His is the one that's not yellow.
No, on the other map, though.
Oh, well, no, actually, his would be right here.
Yeah, okay, all right.
Yeah, this one was not yellow, should have been. So this is probably a better map. So it's the one that's carved out.
Okay, and so right now, there's no road back there. There's no alleys that he would be getting deliveries of furniture there. Everything would probably come in off of Saddle Creek.
Yes, and/or now 46th Street.
Yes, okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Larry. Lynn, do you want to come back up? I guess, since you came down here, I just want to make sure that your questions were answered.
Well, I think they are, as long as there's some assurances that in the future, that that's not going to change and potentially my building be condemned by public domain. That was my greatest concern, is I was going to lose that store. And that would have a significant financial ramification to my family and the eight other families that are employed in that location. And so if I could get assurances that that's not going to occur and I'm getting carved out of that, I don't have any objection to all of that going on around me as long as this isn't a setup for me to then see step two where I lose my business.
Gotcha, all right, thank you, Lynn.
Thank you.
Any questions or comments from the board? Eric, did you want to add anything?
Yeah, so obviously, this is a preliminary plat, you know, described very well by Larry, and I don't have too much to add. We are implementing TOD zoning on the majority of the site. So we think that's excellent and look forward to working with the med center on the entire project. And obviously, the med center is a great attribute and a great benefit to the city of Omaha. And we will continue to work with them on all of the items that laid out in the recommendation report or any other items that may come up throughout the process. So unless you have any specific questions for me, staff recommends approval of the rezoning from GO, GC, and GI to CC, TOD 2 MX and TOD 1 MX. Approval of the preliminary plat subject to the 14 conditions in the recommendation report.
Okay, do we have a motion?
Yes, approval of the rezoning from GO, GC, and GI to CC, TOD 2 MX and TOD 1 MX, and the approval of the preliminary plat subject to the meeting, the 14 conditions of staff report.
Second.
Do we have a motion and a second, Lisa? Will you please record the vote?
Rose Hacker?
Yes.
Franklin?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Pete?
Yes.
Sotolongo?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Agenda item number 10, case C10-16-287. C12-21-100. Applicant, Ryan Seiler for Timberland Partners. Request revised preliminary plat and final plat approval of Sundance. Previously, a portion of Avenue 1, a subdivision inside city limits with rezoning from AG to MU along with a major amendment to the mixed-use development agreement for Avenue 1. Location, northwest of 195th Street and HWS Cleveland Boulevard. May I hear from the applicant, please?
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, members of the board. My name is Mark Johnson. My address is 11440 West Center Road. I'm appearing today on behalf of the applicant, Timberland Partners. With me today are Laren Holcomb and Ryan Seiler from Timberland Partners, and Colin Cosse from Cosse Wilson. They're the architects for the project, as well as Caleb Snyder from Langton Neersen. And they're the civil engineers for the project.
Mark, can you speak up a little bit? Or maybe that mic just needs to be pulled up?
I grew since I was last here, apparently. A little background on Timberland Partners before I give you a brief summary of the project. Timberland Partners is a family-owned development company. They are headquartered out of Minneapolis, Minnesota, and they currently own and manage 18,000 or over 18,000 units in 15 states. So here is just to ignore the building layout. This is just a vicinity map just to show you the general location of the project. As you can see, it's just north of the Fire Ridge Elementary School, located in 195th and HWS Cleveland Boulevard. So the entire site that's subject to the preliminary and final plat is approximately 29.75 acres in size. It's currently zoned AG, but it is located within the existing Avenue 1 mixed-used area. So as such, what's before you today is the request for rezoning from, along with, of course, the preliminary and final plat, is the request for rezoning from AG to MU and an amendment to that existing mixed-use development agreement. I also want to just note that this property is also located within a density corridor pursuant to the city of Omaha master plan. So as I mentioned, the project is comprised of 29.75 acres, although approximately six of those acres will be outlots that will not be retained by Timberland Partners. So the project site itself is about 22 acres in size. As you can see here, there are 251 total units, broken up into 21 separate two-story townhome-style buildings. Each building will have between 8 and 16 units, depending on the building. Just a bit about the unit mix. There'll be 115 one-bedroom units, 112 two-bedroom units, and 24 three-bedroom units. The units themselves will, of course, be very nice. They'll have modern open kitchens with premium fixtures and finishes. And I'll show you the elevations here in a minute. But each unit, it's important to note, will have its own front door entrance. And a lot of these units, if not most of them, will have their own garage and driveway. Just a brief bit about the community amenities that this project will have. As you can see here in the center, there's a large outdoor amenity space that will include a dog park. There will be a clubhouse and a game room here in the southeast corner of the product of the community with a 24-hour fitness area and an outdoor pool and a fire pit and an outdoor kitchen area. So a very nice place. And I also want to highlight that you can see here along the western and southern boundaries, we do have the required 30-foot landscape buffer yard that's required by the code. So I just want to briefly put up the elevations here. As you can see here, this is a 3D rendering of what the buildings will look like. And then here is an example of the 12-unit building elevation. So you can see, I'll get it right. You can see how each unit has a front door. There are 12 total front doors there. And then this is just an elevation of what the clubhouse will look like. Just a bit about traffic circulation as well, as I know that's always, you know, a concern invalidly. So again, I'll put up this vicinity map. As you can see, the connections to Chicago and Burke Street at 197th Street, and of course, Chicago Street is to the north there. Those will be made pursuant to city requirement. But we anticipate that most of the traffic in and out of this community will come off of 192nd Street via HWS Cleveland Boulevard. We did have a virtual neighborhood meeting on April 27th, and we had good attendance and a productive dialogue. And we have since been in communication, at least one way, with one of the proprietors to the south regarding some landscape screening concerns that they had. And we plan to continue to have those conversations moving forward with that particular homeowner, as well as any other homeowners who would like to have continued conversations. And we've reviewed the departments. I just want to make one note here because it is relevant to one of the concerns that was raised at the neighborhood meeting. We reviewed the planning department's recommendations, and we find the same acceptable with one perhaps clarification. The requirement to remove the temporary turnaround on 197th Street, the question came up as to whether or not we could leave that in place. And the developer is willing to work with the city and the neighboring proprietor, or should that neighboring proprietor want to leave that turnaround in place? So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Yeah, Mark, were there any other concerns? You identified that one concern. Were there any other concerns ever expressed that you can share with us?
Yeah, absolutely. And I know there are some folks here who can enumerate some of those. But, you know, it was traffic concerns. There was concerns about the density, 251 units. There were some concerns raised about whether or not we'd have families living in these units who might attend the school and cause crowding issues in Fire Ridge Elementary School. As you know, these developing communities, you know, the schools, boundary lines always change, and that's always a concern. Screening issues. And the developer is, like I said, willing to have conversations about finding acceptable screening. Landscaping would be our preference just because we think it's more aesthetically pleasing for us and for the neighbors. There was a question about a fence. And again, we'd be happy to have those conversations. That would not be our preference just because a fence is not as nice as mature trees. But of course, the concern is, but when are those trees going to be mature? So again, lots to talk about with those folks and want to stress the developer's willingness to do so.
Any concerns raised about the design concept at all?
No, not particularly, not that I can recall. And of course, if there are, Colin, like I said, is here from the architecture firm and would be happy to answer any of those questions.
Mark, this seems like a unique kind of setup with 18,000 units. Is this something that you've worked on before? You know, I mean, they're attractive to me, but I don't know if you've done these in other parts of the...
I have not. This is not, so obviously, my practice is primarily here. And this is Timberland Partners' first time doing this type of concept here locally. I know they do have this concept elsewhere in other parts of the country. And like I said, Laren and Ryan are here. And if you'd like, they can, I'm sure, address that question. But from what I understand, it's been very successful in other markets. And they're very excited about it. You bet.
Thank you, Mark.
You bet.
Any other proponents wishing to speak? Seeing none, are there any opponents?
Good afternoon. My name is Casey Klein. My address is 19519 Harney Street. I am resident of Fire Ridge. I have a kindergartner and a second grader at Fire Ridge Elementary. Will the residents of Fire Ridge and the families of Fire Ridge Elementary not have already suffered enough from this encroaching development? Three, and Harney's not pictured here, of our currently dead-end streets are already becoming through streets to the increasingly busy 192nd. The other two, I live on one that is becoming a through street, Harney. My new neighbor, three doors down, will actually be a massive Greek Orthodox church. The two other streets that are becoming through streets are Farnham and Cleveland. They form the intersection in front of Fire Ridge Elementary. We purchased our house on East Harney a few years ago, and the cul-de-sac was a driving decision in us purchasing that house last fall. Imagine our despair when it was torn up. Now there's a stub that will eventually connect to the 192nd. Obviously, that street is four lanes up to six in some areas, increasingly busy as this massive development starts to take over. In addition to Harney Street losing its safe, dead-end status, both streets that I cross when I walk my five-year-old and eight-year-old to school and from school every day, Farnham and the Boulevard, will also become through streets to 192nd. The third school crossing is here on 197th. Again, this is the street that the revised plat proposes to allow the residents of more than 251 apartments unfettered access to. According to the National Multifamily Housing Council, more than 50% of apartments have two or more occupants, which means that the 251 apartment units will likely house at least 375 people. Additionally, the National Multifamily Housing Council's statistics indicate that at least 50% of apartment occupants have one vehicle, 20% have two vehicles, and four have three or more. I've done the math. It comes up to at least 255.5 vehicles generated from this apartment complex. And of course, these figures don't include visitors, delivery vehicles, et cetera, who would also be accessing this complex. As was conceded, the majority of the residents will be using Cleveland. I don't see any reason why 197th needs to connect to this development. It's unnecessary and unsafe and unwise considering it's adjacent to an elementary school. I encourage you to visit the school zone between 8:00 and 8:15 a.m. and again from 3:00 to 3:15, just to witness how much foot and bike traffic occurs in and around this elementary school. Additionally, allowing easy access from the apartment buildings to our neighborhoods via 197th is concerning for the already increasing levels of vandalism we have experienced at our elementary school parking lot and the community amenity building that our neighborhood has on Cleveland. Last summer, vandal scaled the fence to our pool numerous times, breaking everything from pool furniture to the pool pump. Most recently, the backboard to our neighborhood basketball goal was shattered, creating not only a safety hazard, but another costly repair. Every Friday and Saturday night, the parking lot of both the elementary school and our clubhouse are littered with trash and glass shards from broken alcohol bottles. I already fear for what the opening up of the Boulevard will do to the already high levels of vandalism we are experiencing. And I can only imagine how much more this will increase, both in the school and our neighborhood amenities, by allowing 197th easy access to a new massive apartment complex. Enough is enough. This is not progress. We need to preserve what little safety and security we still have from this insatiable urban sprawl. 197th does not need to be, nor should it be, a through street to my neighborhood and to my children's elementary school. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other opponents wishing to speak?
Good afternoon. My name is Lindsay Schuler, and I'm an attorney with Croker Hucklawfer. And I represent Angie Nixon and her husband, as well as other concerned and like-minded residents of the Fire Ridge community.
Can we have your address, please?
Yes. My law office is 2120 South 72nd Street, Omaha, Nebraska.
And did you say Lindsay?
Lindsay, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yes. And I know we are kind of late to the game on this because we just got notification of the meeting a couple of weeks ago. But before I present our position, I also would like to note that I do have 12 community letters, as well as a letter from the Fire Ridge HOA president. And these all concern specifically the cut-through of 197th Street. We are here today to express opposition to the approval of the preliminary and final plat of the Timberland Partners Sundance subdivision. As the proposed and preliminary plats are different in scope and purpose from the layout of the Avenue 1 plan, the Timberland Partners failed to engage community members regarding the new purpose for the plan. And the community objects to the cutting through of 197th Street into the Sundance subdivision. Particularly, this development has come before the planning board and the Omaha City Council on two other occasions. As previously noted, in October 2013, this was the Gateway Park community and was going to be a business development. It did not complete to fruition. In 2016, Avenue 1 was to be a large business development and residential use space for senior living. Again, did not come to fruition. Here we are in 2021 with Timberland Partners presenting the Sundance Townhomes with a completely different scope than the Avenue 1 plan, which is now being considered a revised preliminary plat. For the past eight years, the community members of Fire Ridge have shown interest in the development and a willingness to be involved in the discussion. In both the Gateway Park and Avenue 1 projects, the community members attended several meetings with both developers and the city council members in order to discuss subdivisions. The preliminary plat for Gateway Park and the final plat for Avenue 1 were approved because the local community worked together with the developers and the city council in order to reach a solution together that took in the best interests of all parties. The community compromised with the development trade-off for... for keeping 197th Street closed and the installation of bike and walking paths in order to promote togetherness of the communities. At the time of annexation, the Fire Ridge community was told by the City of Omaha Annexation Study and the Suburban Master Park Plan that there would be a large signature park south of 192nd and West Dodge Road that would connect to a similar park north of West Dodge Road. Such park has not come to fruition. It was supposed to be in about 80 acres. The Omaha Master Plan and the land use element notes that there's a lack of large-scale parks in West Omaha and lacking in public open space. And to compensate for the signature park that was never built, the community members of Fire Ridge wanted to work with the developers in order to engage additional green space and a bike and footpath that was incorporated into that final plat. These items have now been removed from the Sundance subdivision without consideration of community input. Timberland Partners' proposed subdivision fails to comply with the Omaha Annexation Plan and contribute in a significant way to the Omaha Master Plan for suburban parks. Today, Timberland Partners is attempting to slide through a new subdivision under Avenue One's preliminary plat and by calling it a revised preliminary plat. But in truth, there are significant differences between the Avenue One preliminary plat and the revised preliminary plat that we see today. The road configuration has significantly changed. It went from a business park and senior living to 251 townhomes with a different purpose and different number of buildings. In addition, the Sundance plat completely removes the solutions and compromises that were reached by the community members during the Gateway Park and Avenue One projects. Unlike the Gateway Park and Avenue One developments, where they had several meetings, they met with neighborhood residents multiple times. As the proponent indicated, there was one Zoom meeting that occurred on April 27th, just a couple of weeks ago, that proposed a brand-new plan. And actually, there were only four persons in attendance, as per my client. The Timberland Partners' attempt to slip a drastically altered plan for approval, seemingly overnight, is against the Planning Department's general rules and development for the city of Omaha. And it sets a bad precedent for future development. Most importantly, and the largest concern of my client and other residents of Fire Ridge is, and that has already been mentioned, is the safety of the schoolchildren. 197th is directly adjacent to Fire Ridge Elementary School. It is seen as a general thoroughfare where parents go to pick up their schoolchildren and they park regularly on both sides of the street, whether permitted or not. And children are seen regularly running across to and from to school at both drop-off and pickup times. A thoroughfare for 197th Street, a generally primary pickup location point for schoolchildren, is against the general safety of those children. It creates a dangerous situation for the children at drop-off and pickup time that will increase with the amount of vehicles driving through. As previously mentioned by the proponent, most traffic will be going through HWS Cleveland Boulevard. The expansion of Chicago Street, HWS Cleveland, and Farnham Streets, along with the private internal streets of the Sundance subdivision, will provide sufficient traffic flow to major arterials, such that 197th Street does not need to become a thoroughfare. No one is being harmed by keeping 197th Street closed, but it does provide a major benefit to the schoolchildren at Fire Ridge. Members of the board, we respectfully ask that you vote either to deny or hold over the final plat until such time as the Timberland Partners can comply with the technical requirements of the planning process, comply with the annexation report and Omaha Parks master plans, and properly meet with community members to hear their consideration and input regarding preserving community safety and keeping 197th Street closed. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Lindsay.
Lindsay, can I ask you a real quick question?
Yes, you can.
Before you leave. You indicated there are only four people in attendance. Was that the virtual meeting?
That was the virtual meeting.
Why do you think there were only four people?
Because my client was in attendance at the meeting and she was one of the four.
But why do you think more didn't attend?
Because you can see on Zoom the attendees of the meeting.
But why, what's the reason why more people didn't attend?
Oh, I'm sorry. I misunderstood your question. The notice that came out was sent six days before the meeting. And they generally only sent it out to the 300-foot circumference of the area project. And so a lot of the neighbors that were usually invited and coming to these meetings under the previous developers lived outside that 300-foot circumference, but are also very involved in the community and wanted to provide input, as you can see from the previous developments.
Okay. Thank you.
Any further questions?
Thank you, Lindsay.
Thank you.
Any other opponents?
My name is Angie Nixon. I live at 104 South 197th Street in Fire Ridge. In response to that question that you just asked, Lindsay, the parcel of land that has been separated out for Sundance is a very small portion under the umbrella of Avenue One. And it's basically our house, our neighbor's house, and a few people in Elk Valley that were notified, that were required to be notified. So all the people that are affected by Avenue One on the other side were not notified of this. Nobody in our neighborhood knew about this. I went around and talked to a bunch of neighbors. Nobody knew. Okay, so thank you. Sorry, I had to get that out. Thank you all for hearing us out today. We are concerned taxpayers calling for thoughtful, respectful, well-planned action where there is a need currently, as we have an elementary school of children to protect and serve, as does our city. Fire Ridge residents are opposed to the Sundance development due to its significant change from senior living, which would be a little to no impact to our school, to 251 townhomes, which affects both cut-through traffic and our school. Sundance is planned just north of our school and Avenue One with 1,505 apartments, hotel, retail, and commercial planned just east of our school, all under the umbrella of Jasper Stone Avenue One Development. We have been left in the dark on many changes here. Very few people were required to be notified of it, as I just stated. And only four families attended the Zoom-only meeting held just last week. The school HOA property management knew nothing about townhomes. Our community deserves a real in-person meeting with developers, including both Sundance and Avenue One, as the plan has changed drastically. We haven't heard anything since 2017 about Avenue One. And the developer that presented Avenue One back then isn't even affiliated with it anymore. That would be block from Kansas City. We deserve this because we will be the ones dealing with the traffic congestion from it on a daily basis. Along with all the other ways, it will completely change the dynamic of Fire Ridge. The Sundance plat affects Fire Ridge School more like the Gateway Office Park first plat. Therefore, as city council approved in 2013, we do not want 197th cut through again and just a bike path instead. 197th Street is right next to the school. We are a narrow street, very narrow street, and don't want to become a parking lot and have traffic congestion making kids more at risk of motor vehicle injury. Motor vehicle traffic injuries is the greatest cause of death in ages five to nine. Even though deaths have been few in Nebraska, 93% of these unintentional injuries, age five to nine, require ER visits and hospitalizations. PTSD follows many of these injuries. Approximately 25,000 kids are injured in school zone accidents each year, according to the Transportation Research Board. A local school leader told me today, the more kids that attend a school, the worse the traffic gets. With 1,756 units planned around us, it's going to get much worse. I enjoyed the game of Frogger as a kid, but I would rather not have our schoolkids have to play it for real every day. I also don't want our school to become like Spring Ridge. That school gives a perfect glimpse of Fire Ridge School's future. Their enrollment, 518, ours, 498. I studied their school the other day at pickup time. They have a narrow street, just like 197th by Fire Ridge, next to it, which had to be made a do-not-enter one-way, 7:00 to 9:00, and 2:00 to 4:00 p.m. That will be us. 22 cars were parked illegally at 2:55 p.m., right under the no-parking 2:00 to 4:00 p.m. sign. We don't want to become a one-way street parking lot, danger to kids, plastered with street signs, calling the police every five minutes to get through our narrow street. People don't want, if people don't follow the street signs, clearly. I have photos of it. They dented 178th Street in front of Spring Ridge or on the street in front of the school. This chaos can be prevented by keeping 197th Street closed and just doing the bike path, as was approved by council the first time. The development already has four roads they have put through from our quiet neighborhood. That is plenty. Sundance has two exits, plenty. An apartment development down on Farnham by Peace Presbyterian planned has a dead end. Why can't we, when children's protection is in order? At 168th and Giles, a large apartment complex was planned. And Sarpy County Commissioner said, no, it would change the dynamic too much. They were respectful of neighbors. That was doing the right thing. I'm hopeful we can do that here. 197th Street goes against, perpendicular to the school pickup line flow of traffic. It would only add chaos, not be relief for our neighborhood or school. This is not a bottleneck situation. Cars will always park by the shortest distance spot to a school front door, causing congestion. No cars, no through street on a narrow, against-the-flow-of-pickup-line street next to a school is much preferable. And besides, you made 178th by Spring Ridge one-way for half the day anyway. So that proves the point, best not to have it go through. Most parents at pickup don't comply with road signs, which further proves the point, it is best to not put 197th Street through. Fire Ridge taxpayers asks, these are our asks. We want a real in-person meeting with developers of Sundance and Avenue One as both developments greatly affect our school and community. And we need a full picture. Residents have no idea what's going on. We want 197th Street to stay closed and just add a bike path, as council voted before, to keep kids safe by school and parking and congestion down. We want our park, we were told we would have by the city. Since I am aware the city doesn't have funding for this and we have no more SIDs since annexed, we feel the developer, with how vastly he is changing our quiet dynamic to a bustling downtown that we will have to deal with on a daily basis, traffic and school congestion increased risk to kids like a downtown area school, he should have to pay for our grand scenic park we were told we would have by the city 16 years ago. His advertising says his development will connect to Omaha vast existing trails and parks. Please find out how much developing Fire Ridge Gateway Park with a pedestrian bridge to Youngman would cost to objectively make the developers accountable to the taxpayers who are going to be dealing with the chaos he is making of our neighborhood. Kids are safer when they have parks to go play at. We have to get in a car and go to a more dangerous arterial now to get to a real Omaha park. Inner-city kids are at a higher risk of motor vehicle injuries. If he is going to make our kids inner-city kids, he should give us a park to help keep them safe. The city should keep the street closed next to the school to do the same. We don't have George Jetson vehicles yet, but somebody may want to call up Elon Musk and get going on that with this development. Justification and alterations were made to the master plan to allow all 1,756 residential units on only one corner of 192nd and Dodge, since they couldn't do it elsewhere, right next to an elementary school? Why? I get you need the tax base, but let's get a better, safer, more respectful plan going for this, please. Let's work together to come up with a respectful, well-thought-out plan. I feel our opinions should be valued here as we are down here living it every day, not looking at an aerial view or quick study. Timberland's landscape buffer plan was six-foot, two-inch trees to replace large, long, mature tree groves that include a wetland area. Does that make sense to you? We will be staring at a parking lot from our side yard. That does not mix in well with our neighborhood. We already have Avenue One construction traffic on HWS Cleveland Boulevard coming right by our school into the Avenue One development. And the cones aren't even off the street yet. Here's our Fire Ridge School. Here's our Fire Ridge School right here. Here's 197th Street. The car pickup lines come up Farnham Street currently, and they go around this loop and back down Farnham. And they also come up HWS Cleveland and go around this loop this way and come back out. Now, I anticipate they will come up HWS Cleveland and back around this way and out. 197th Street would be, is against, as you can see, perpendicular against the flow of our two pickup lines of traffic. That is only going to cause chaos. That is not going to help get people away from the school. These are cars that are parked. They're not trying to get through. They're parked waiting for their kids for at least 30 to 45 minutes.
Angie, how much longer are you gonna?
I just have a couple more pictures, then I'll be done.
All right.
Okay.
Because I just asked, and we have other people that...
Yeah, I'll hurry. Okay. This is Spring Ridge School, a sister school. As you can see, do-not-enter signs. This is what I did a study of. They have a higher enrollment, much higher enrollment. So this is also a narrow street. So I anticipate this is what our street will become. This is an image of the cars that are parked illegally at 2:55 p.m., right underneath the don't park here from 2:00 to 4:00 p.m. sign at Spring Ridge School.
Angie, did the principal or anybody from the school have any comments about this that you're aware of?
The principal didn't even know that this was happening. And we intend to meet with her to tell her ourselves. I had to spend $100 on copies to inform my neighborhood about their development. I think that's all I have for you. And I'll turn in the rest of these so you can just take a look at them yourselves.
Okay, thank you, Angie. Are there any other opponents? Sir, before you start, between Casey, Lindsay, and Angie, they covered quite a bit of, you know, the traffic, 197th School. If you have new information to share with us, that's what we are looking for.
I understand.
Okay.
Yep, nothing specific. My concern was primarily the 197th Street pushing through. My property immediately...
You can come forward, give your name and address.
Thank you. My name's Todd Woolenborg. My address is 105 South 197th Street.
Did you say Todd?
Todd, yes.
Okay, thank you. And that was your concern, was closing, keeping 197th Street closed?
Correct.
Okay.
Yep.
Anything else?
No.
All right, thank you, Todd.
Thank you.
Any other opponents wishing to speak? Okay. Please, with new information.
My name is Lee Iwasik-Sitnowar. I live on 197th Street, also 111 South 197th Street. I just want to point out that I am here. My neighbor across the street that's adjacent to Angie is also here, Barry Grollier, Todd. Some of us did miss that Zoom meeting, but it was due to other obligations. So I would have been there, could I have been there?
Okay.
That's all.
Thank you, Lee. Any other opponents? None? Okay. Seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing. Mark, did you want to come back up and address some concerns?
You bet.
Or all the concerns? I keep saying some concerns. Address the concerns.
Do my best. Again, Mark Johnson, 11440 West Center Road, appearing on behalf of the applicant. So Timberland Partners, you know, wasn't involved in the original development. Obviously, if you live in Omaha and you're in the land development business, you're aware that Avenue One, that that project was of heightened conversation. As far as the connection to 197th Street, my understanding is that that connection was always required. I'll let Eric and the staff speak to that requirement. Obviously, we're open to having conversations about, you know, that issue, which seems to be the primary issue. I know there are many, but that's maybe the number one on the list if they had to, if they had to list them. Again, we're happy to have those conversations. And city staff is much better positioned to enumerate the rationale behind the connections. But my understanding is, it's a city policy to have these street connections for fire safety and of multiple reasons to have that connectivity. So again, I'll kind of defer... So, again, I'll kind of defer to city staff on that one. As far as the neighborhood meeting, the notices went out to everybody within three hundred feet. We get a title search that's certified by a local title company that, on that search that was sent to, a letter was sent to Elkhorn Public Schools, wherever the registered agent address is pursuant to the property records. We send notices to everyone within three hundred feet. We had a Zoom meeting instead of an in-person meeting because we thought after a bit of dialogue on our side that that gave more, more folks the opportunity to come and attend, given the climate we're dealing with right now. So, and as far as only four people being there, we didn't get, apparently there's a sign-in mechanism, but I'm a Zoom novice still, and Caleb was running it, and he said that there were, I, I have to think there were at least fifteen to twenty people on there. There were only four people primarily talking, but there, it was not just four people, and that's not terribly relevant, but there were more than four in attendance.
Does that include?
No.
Your group?
No.
Okay.
And again, I don't know how many there were, and that's not important. I guess what I would stress is, we're happy to have continued dialogue in person via phone call, via Zoom between now and council, the development team. I went back there and talked to them, of course, they're, you know, they flew in from Minneapolis today, but they're happy to have these continued dialogues and conversations to do whatever we can do to address some of these concerns. I mean, I'm not sure how much of the concerns we can address with respect to school traffic. I will say, an issue came up, the issue was raised at the neighborhood meeting about the types of folks that would be living in these apartment units, and to Mr. Moore's question about, you know, have we done this concept in other jurisdictions? The answer was yes. Their experience on our side is that these types of units with the rental, at the rental point that they command are primarily, and because we have so few multiple bedroom, I mean, we have half one-bedroom, half two-bedroom, and just a handful of three-bedroom, they're primarily empty nesters and young professionals, so not a lot of kids. Again, we can't guarantee that, that, you know, there won't be any kids, but as far as driving additional traffic for the school, I have to think it's very, very minimal, if at all.
Mark?
And the park, the park, we, part of the recommendation report was to coordinate with the city Parks Department to contribute to the city park, which is just east of Fire Ridge Elementary. Let me put back up a map. So, there is a city park, and it is very, very small. It's right here. It is a city, it is a city park, and, and this, part of, yeah, part of the request, part of the, one of the conditions to the city's recommendation report was to coordinate with some park improvements that we would pay for privately to help improve that city park, and we are more than happy to have that dialogue. We had a playground budget as part of our development, and the conversation has been, well, let's just reallocate that to the public park and try to see if we can figure out how to improve that for the benefit of the neighbors and for our residents, would be very close within walking distance. So, those conversations will also be had between now and council with, with city staff. Am I missing anything?
Mark, you said that you notified Elkhorn Public Schools?
We did. They were part of the...
And you have not heard anything back from...
We have not.
Okay.
And those letters went out on April ninth. So, that, so we sent out, we send letters to notify everybody of the neighborhood meeting, and the city also sends letters to notify folks, I think it's three hundred feet. Mr. England, you can correct me if I'm wrong. But those letters come out later, so I'm not sure which letter they were referring to, but our letters went out on Friday, April ninth, for an April twenty-seventh meeting. So, we tried to give everybody approximately two weeks' advance notice. That's kind of our firm's policy. We handle these meetings every now and then, so.
What was I gonna ask? Oh, Angie was talking about, and you mentioned you would be more than happy to meet in person with all of the neighbors, regardless if this gets approved or laid over. Of course, if it gets denied, there's no reason to meet. I don't know what motion we'll have, but you would be...
Yeah. We would, and we would ask that we, obviously, all these projects are, are time-sensitive. They're excited to be in the market, and, and there's probably two months between now and council, ample time to meet with neighbors and staff and to work these issues out. So, our hope is that we can avoid a layover and continue to have these dialogues between now and city council.
Your point about connectivity, Hundred and Ninety-Second Street seems to be, you know, kind of a contentious point there.
Yeah.
And your point about, you know, connectivity with fire and rescue and everything, if the city, if the city said you didn't have to connect up there, would that be a problem?
It would not be a problem for us.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, I don't know that we could, well, I'll let Eric.
Yeah.
We would need at least, I think we need at least two in and outs for fire and rescue, but again, I'll let Public Works and Planning address that question.
Well, we're not gonna say that, but we can get to that.
I know, I know. I mean, we've, we've run into this many times about connectivity.
Sure.
And for fire safety, keeping other cars off of collector streets and that sort of thing, yeah.
I, I totally understand the concern. I have four kids, two of which who go to Spring Ridge Elementary School, and every now and then I draw the short straw and have to do pickup. Drop-off is always preferred because I make them go earlier or I make them walk. So, I completely understand as a resident and, you know, a close neighbor of this development, how, you know, what those valid concerns are. And I guess, you know, like I said, I can only reiterate our willingness to continue to have dialogue and to make concessions, and Mr. Seiler said this on the phone, I mean, which I thought was really great. He said, "Look, we're willing to have dialogue and make concessions where we can. Some things are out of our control, like the unit count, and I think two hundred and fifty-one units on a twenty-two acre site, you guys would all agree, is not, is very low on the spectrum of density for multifamily, and this is, you know, fits within the master plan and all that good stuff." I don't want to bore you with stuff you already know, but I did just want to send out, this is, so this is the landscape screening exhibit that, that we had worked on after the meeting, after conversations with Mrs. Nixon, and we sent it to her, and I, I never got responsible. I don't know if, hopefully it reached her. So, the concern with, was, well, I'm gonna be looking at a parking lot, which is totally understandable. And so, we had the engineers, Lampner, Anderson, put this together to show the screening that that is anticipated. So, I just wanted to share this with everybody to, to, to show you kind of what we're, we're looking at as your typical parking lot screening, so. And I'd be happy to answer any more questions or anything that follow-up that you might have.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any comments or questions from the board? We hear from Eric. Eric?
Yeah, so, took quite a few notes, quite a few comments, quite a few items that we've talked about for many cases. Obviously, we had Spring Ridge a couple months ago, or very recently, so I'll just start. I say this multiple times, I also live one block from an Elkhorn Elementary School, so I am familiar with traffic patterns and I understand, and it's not just Elkhorn School District, it's Millard, it's District Sixty-Six and O P S as well. And our Public Works Department works diligently with those school districts on access and improving access all the time. So, I just want to throw that out there and start, and I, I know, schools can be, can be difficult a couple times a day. I, you know, absolutely. That is a situation that exists today, whether this goes in or not. So, this is revised preliminary plat and final plat. This plat could have been submitted under the name Avenue One, lots twelve through sixteen, or whatever the next phase is. Basically, it's the next phase of Avenue One, even though the plat is being called Sundance. The only reason for the revised preliminary plat is because the internal street network has, has modified a little bit. The connections from Chicago Street and Hundred and Ninety-Second Street, we've been through this. That was already approved with Avenue One by city council in the preliminary plat. If the phase, the next phase final plat basically just had the same street configuration, the same use type, this would just be on the administrative meeting only for a final plat. But there are changes, and obviously, we're transparent, and, you know, the major amendment is accounting for the different layout of the configuration of the buildings. Yes, this was previously designated for senior living, which the city classifies as multifamily as well. This is within a quarter mile of West Dodge Road, so there are unlimited amount of density of the number of apartment units that can be had along West Dodge. So, this is absolutely compliant with the approved Avenue One preliminary plat as well as the master plan. So, I've got a few, few notes, I'm gonna try to, try to get to most of them here. Touching on who we notify, we, we notify school districts whenever, with, with all of our planning board agendas and cases, we did not hear from Elkhorn School District either. State law requires three-hundred-foot notification, you know, so we're basically complying of who we notify, and, and Mark touched on that a little bit, as well as for what the development team did. So, so this is the process. Nobody's slipping anything by or trying to, you know, to, I mean, the major amendment is the process that goes through Planning Board and City Council that allows for the change when you have mixed-use development agreement. The mixed-use has not been activated yet on this site because it had not been final-platted. But this is the proper procedure, and usually, we have at least one of these a month on our planning board agendas. Neighborhood connectivity is, is very important for the city, whether planning, Public Works, Parks, all of our departments. Neighborhood connectivity is very essential. I know that Casey had mentioned three connections, Cleveland, Farnham, maybe Harney, I'm not sure of the, the third one. Those have always been intended to, to connect and be extended. Those were not permanent cul-de-sacs that were put in place, and the same is said for Hundred and Ninety-Second Street and Chicago Street. So, the intention was always to develop and connect those street networks for the, for the next development that occurs. Public Works frequently gets into, you know, discussion points about if you do not have those connection points and you're forcing everyone to go to an arterial street to meander around when there's higher speeds, it just leads to more traffic accidents on those arterial streets. So, inner neighborhood connectivity is vital for that. Does it make sense if this apartment, if somebody wanted to go to Two Hundred and Fourth and Pacific, that they, they need to head east to Hundred and Ninety-Second Street to the arterial, where there's higher speeds? When, you know, driving through the neighborhood that they're a part of, I mean, it only makes sense for the master plan and city policies. As far as a master planned park, I cannot speak to what happened with the two thousand and six annexation. That was just prior to my time. Parks Department is included with this recommendation report, and I have never heard, I personally worked on the Gateway Park and the Avenue One reports, when they've gone through over these past eight or nine years. I don't recall ever hearing that comment. I don't know if, if on the northwest corner of Lawrence Youngman Lake, I, you know, I don't know. I don't know the history of that. As far as a bridge from the site connecting to Lawrence Youngman over Dodge, that was proposed as part of Avenue One's project. That was not a city requirement. If Avenue One still wants to proceed and possibly do that in the future, you know, they have that option to explore with the state and the city, but that's not a city I think that's most, oh, there was, Mark, his first go-around had mentioned wanting to keep the turnaround on Hundred and Ninety-Second Street. Staff is not supportive of that. We believe that the, the street curb needs to be put in place where the, where the right of way is in place, and that temporary turnarounds be removed. I don't know if you have any additional questions for me before I get the recommendation?
Eric, just to clarify, I want to make sure, the connector streets from Hundred and Ninety-Second Street, what the city has always intended. Which, which streets are those, again?
You said from Hundred and Ninety-Second?
Yeah.
Well, so it's just off your, your map in your packet, but you would have the half-mile, which is H W S Cleveland, so that's been built, that's in place, even though it doesn't show up on your, your G I S aerial. Then you have a half-mile south of West Dodge, which is Harney Street. There's been a small segment that's either been built or will be constructed very soon. And then you go further south, basically three-quarters of a mile from West Dodge, or a quarter of a mile north of Pacific, would be approximately the Leavenworth
Okay.
that we've dealt with for the Rabello nicely property. Those are the three through routes that would have access to Hundred and Ninety-Second Street. Now, aligning those through routes as they connect to Two Hundred and Fourth is a little bit of a challenge. Some of these neighborhoods were developed before the through route policy, so we're doing our best of aligning the existing streets and infrastructure to what, what should be those through routes. But as you can look on your map, Farnham Street is basically a through route now to Two Hundred and Fourth Street, okay? I believe that's the point that Harney will connect, that we haven't figured, or we haven't final-platted that portion of Avenue One, so it's been a little while since I looked at that, but if my memory serves me correct. I don't, was that your question?
Yeah, yeah. I was just curious, what's coming off of Hundred and Ninety-Second Street, mainly, that's gonna feed into those neighborhoods? That's, that's what I'm interested in.
The quarter-half and, and quarter again.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions?
Okay. Okay, well, I'll read the recommendation report if you do have further questions. Obviously, Public Works is here as well. Staff recommends approval, approval of the rezoning from A G to M U, subject to submittal of an acceptable mixed-use development agreement prior to forwarding the request to city council. Approval of the revised preliminary plat, subject to the thirteen conditions in the report. Approval of the final plat, subject to the conditions of the approved revised preliminary plat and submittal of an acceptable final subdivision agreement prior to city council.
Do we have a motion?
Can I ask a point of clarification first?
Sure.
So, if we approve the preliminary plat, but hold over the final plat to address some of the neighborhood concerns, would that make a major difference in the progress of the development?
Well, I'll, I'll speak on the city's behalf. It's probably gonna take some time, if everything was approved today, it's probably gonna take some time to get the final plat and everything to city council as it is, because you have subdivision agreements, you have mixed-use development agreements. It, it takes time to work through some of those items and get the city the items that we need. So, you know, if, if you approved everything today, there's still ample time to have multiple meetings with neighbors before city council. That's just from the city perspective. I can't speak on the, the development team's timeline of their project.
Okay, that's good. Thank you.
Eric, again, One Ninety-Second was always meant to, to cut through. Is that correct?
Yes. We've, there are multiple public hearings, Gateway Park, Avenue One. There was opposition then about not connecting Hundred Ninety-Second and...
Chicago.
Yeah, and Chicago. City would always like to see that connection and always recommended approval, and that's how it was approved, preliminary plat with, with city council.
Mike, I was just, I was just gonna say, we could, there's thirteen recommendation items. What if you added a fourteenth to that, to have an in-person meeting with the, with the neighbors of the area?
Yeah, and, and I would just say, that's, that's mostly what I'm concerned with, is, is the outreach to the neighbors, amongst other things. You guys brought up some, some great points, and I'll just make my common, comments now, but I know a little something about school traffic, and I will tell you that, that school, as Eric mentioned, that's a problem throughout the metro area. And if I were you, I'd really get with your school district and your design architects when they're building your Elkhorn Schools and tell them, you, you need to, you need to modify the design concept because they don't work in this format very well. So, I'm a little sympathetic to that, obviously. I am not opposed to this development at all. I, I think the development is fine, but I do think it's important for the conversations to occur in person as much as possible so that you can get that feedback, and so that you're not maybe gonna be completely satisfied, but at least you will get some of the questions addressed. And the fact, you know, there's a discrepancy between fifteen to twenty people and four people in attendance, just get everybody together and have a conversation. So, I would probably go ahead, and I'm gonna go ahead and make that motion, I'm gonna go ahead and make the motion to approve the rezoning from A G to M U, subject to submittal of an acceptable mixed-use district development agreement in compliance with all applicable regulations prior to forwarding the request to city council, and approval of the revised preliminary plat, subject to the thirteen conditions outlined in the report, but I'm gonna add that fourteenth condition, which is to have a live in-person meeting with the school district representatives, as well as the neighborhoods and the neighborhood associations, and then approval of the final plat, subject to the conditions of the approved revised preliminary plat, and submittal of an acceptable final subdivision agreement prior to forwarding the request onto city council for final action.
We have a motion and a second. Lisa, will you record the vote, please?
Franklin?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Pete?
Yes.
Sotolongo?
Yes.
Rosehacker?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Okay, agenda item number 15 was on consent, it was taken off. I was hoping I was only going to have to say Alvin's last name once, but I'll do it again. Agenda item number 15, case C-10-21-107, applicant Alvin Okereke, I hope I said that right. Request rezoning from DR to R5, location 8557 Boyd Street. Is the applicant here?
It's Okereke, Alvin Okereke.
Okereke?
Okereke, good to have you, I appreciate it.
All right.
9201 Franklin Street, Omaha, Nebraska. I'm the new owner of 8557 Boyd Street, just purchased in March. Currently have a plan to develop into single-family residences. I'm currently just requesting a rezoning from the sort of, I guess, limbo is the best sort of late term that I could use, but the DR zoning to R5, which, again, aligns with the plan as far as the development, and there is currently a house on, you know, that's currently on the property. There's a tenant that I inherited from the previous owner, who I'm more than welcome to keep. But, again, the zoning specifically for some initial plans of potentially parceling out this current residence as well as future plans for the property. I'll try not to take too much time, because I know there are some neighbors that, I suppose, have had bad experiences from other developments in this area, and I certainly respect that, but I'll be more happy to answer any questions that they have.
Thank you, Alvin. We'll probably call you back. Any other proponents wishing to speak? Seeing none, are there any opponents?
My name is Richard Hughes, 4110 North 87th Street. I received my notice by being in the 300-feet circle. Primarily, my problem rests with what was done previously to the, from 87th Street to 90th Street, to 87th Street to 88th Street. This was a vacant lot that was almost six acres, and the Catholic schools was trying to put 461 apartments in there. We convinced the planning board and everybody else that it was totally impossible to have that many apartments in that smaller area. They reduced it down to 31 houses. It is, we've looked with that since then. We have not had too much problem, we've had more problem than I like. I've lived at my address for 37 years, and they made what, basically, I want to know is, how many houses is he planning on putting there? If he's putting any apartments there? We would definitely be, I can bring the entire Keystone Task Force down here if they're going to try to put apartments there. Basically, I'll let him answer that.
Okay.
That's what I, that's what I'm here for.
All right, thank you, Richard.
Thank you.
Appreciate you coming down. Are there any other opponents wishing to speak? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Alvin, would you come forward again? Give your name and address again, please, and-
Alvin Okereke, 9201 Franklin Street.
Richard brought up, he wants to know if you have an idea how many homes or apartments or-
Yeah, so I've been to at least one of these meetings before, and certainly having sat back there and listened to some of the other presentations, it's obviously a very sensitive subject with the neighbors. So we're, I personally, I actually have a pretty high standard that I expect this to live up to, one of it being the sensitivity, again, to the neighbors. So there are some initial plans, a lot of which I have discussed with the city in my initial pre-application meetings, but because of the very catered and sensitive approach, I do expect for us to accomplish with our approach. We are, we are, we don't necessarily have a number at this time. It could range based on what's allowed per the zoning we're requesting anywhere, I mean, maximum really is about 50-something units. That's not to scare anyone at all, but it's just to indicate, based on that zoning, what is allowable per, basically, square, unit per square foot. But again, a lot of issues are on my list to tackle, including, again, the density, the quality, certainly the quality is of utmost importance to me, and the longevity, actually, of this development, and, again, how it lives up to what Keystone is and what the neighbors expect. So unfortunately, I don't have a number that I'd like to be held to at this point, but a lot of those issues will be addressed. I could maybe safely say about 30, 35, but-
So are you talking apartments, or are you talking about-
No, sir, oh, that's certainly, absolutely not, I can say for certain.
That's what he, I think that's what he wanted to know for sure.
No doubt, and I have spoken, actually, to a lot, a couple, really, of some pretty prominent members of the task force, so the one thing I can say for certain is that there won't be any, there won't be any apartments. I can say that for sure.
Okay. And since you don't know exactly how, what the density will be, you're, you're okay with continuing to have meetings with the neighbors and discuss and work with them?
Absolutely, and I've actually volunteered, of course, to attend their next meeting. They haven't had meetings in the last, I think, two months, or certainly it could be a year, I can't remember now how long it's been, but there may be a meeting next month, but I've spoken to the president, and they're not sure yet, but I expect to be there, I've requested to be there, quite frankly, so.
Is there something that was given him from building rental units? If that's what he chose?
Multi-family housing would not be allowed or supported based on the master plan, but that if you're talking rental, single-family, duplexes, or townhomes, that, yeah, that would be, that would be allowed.
Is your intent for rent or?
For sale. Actually, that is another, another topic, again, that's on the list, on my list. That topic of for rent versus for sale is one that I certainly expect to hash out and-
So it hasn't been decided yet?
It hasn't, we are leaning for sale, again, just thinking of the neighborhood, but again, there is a holistic approach that we are trying to take, which really accounts for, frankly, what Omaha needs, what individuals, families need as far as housing, and, you know, whether it's for rent, for sale, clearly, we know that there, issues exist as far as housing affordability, so if we are to tackle for sale, we certainly expect to grasp a lot of the population that may not be within reach, I suppose.
Thank you, Alvin.
Thanks.
Any additional comments or questions? Eric?
Yeah, the proposed rezoning to R5 is master plan compliant and considered low-density residential. There is also existing R5 zoning directly to the west. Obviously, if there's any plating and streets that are being installed, there will be a plating process that'll have to come back through Planning Board and City Council as well. So staff recommends approval of the rezoning.
Do we have a motion?
Go ahead. Motion to approve of the rezoning from DR to R5.
We have a motion and a second. Lisa, will you please record the vote?
Moore?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Pete?
Yes.
Sotolongo?
Yes.
Rosehacker?
Yes.
Franklin?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you, Richard, for coming down. Thank you, Alvin. Let's see, agenda item number 19, this was on for approval, case C-10-21-111, applicant Kroger Inc., request rezoning from CC and GC to CC, property is located within an ACI-3 overlay district, location southeast of 72nd Street and Military Road. Is the applicant here? Nope. Doesn't look like it, okay. Is there any other proponents that wish to speak?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Brent Beller, 1140 West Center Road. With me today is also Ryan Lynch. Ryan and his family, so this project, as we understand it, we just got notice about it, Ryan and his family actually own the Tiger Toms, which is immediately next door. We're not necessarily in opposition to this, because it's going to be nice to see this piece of property get redeveloped, but to what Mr. Pete just said, we haven't really had any outreach from the Kroger folks about what's going on. In particular, and sorry, we don't have a better map, but there is a sliver of property that's right here that is striped for parking spaces. Ryan's dad, who owns Tiger Toms, sorry, and the former owner, this is currently under contract, or no, when they sold it to Kroger, the former owner actually had a lease agreement where they actually leased those parking spaces, and so with a new development coming in, when we saw their site plan, which there's kind of, there's a copyright here, we noticed that they've done away with those parking spaces. In addition, they're proposing to close off one of our entry points. Don't object to that necessarily, the closing off of the entry points, but one of the things we want to make sure is that we preserve our rights to have those parking spaces, because that, we have a lease agreement, and candidly, it was written on a piece of paper and between two gentlemen 30 years ago, but they always, they're, they always, you know, abided by that. So we want to preserve our rights, so one of the things that we would ask is if we can just lay this over until we can actually have a conversation with the Kroger folks and somehow get in contact with them, so we can make sure that that, those parking rights are preserved, because, again, with, we're supportive, we don't necessarily object to the closing off of one of the entry points, but we do want to make sure we don't lose parking spaces as part of this project. So our request is maybe delayed over, give us a little more time to try and find the Kroger folks, and get someone to call us back so that we can have that discussion.
Just to reinforce that, the lease that you have is somewhat informal, and is there a termination date or anything on it?
No. That is the lease agreement. So I'm sure they've framed this and put this in their office, but that is the lease agreement that they always abound by. And it does say that either party can terminate with 30 days' notice, but as we sit here in 2021, no one has terminated it, so.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you.
Don't want, I mean, you know what we do, I don't oppose development, we just need some time to kind of preserve these rights, and so that's why we're not saying we're not in favor of the project, but we do want to make sure the parking rights get preserved.
Okay, thank you, Brent. I think I was still asking for the proponents. Are there any other proponents here? Seeing none, are there any opponents that wish to speak? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Additional comments or questions? Before we hear from Eric?
Yeah, this is a simple split zoning matter. We have a recommendation for approval, but staff's not opposed to a layover if that's the route you choose.
Okay. Do we have a motion?
Well, since the applicant's not here, I would motion to lay over this.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Lisa, will you record the vote, please?
Morris?
Yes.
Pete?
Yes.
Sotolongo?
Yes.
Rosehacker?
Yes.
Franklin?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Motion to lay over approved.
Agenda item number 20, case C-11-21-112, applicant Stephen Held. It was on for layover, it was pulled off. Request approval of a PUR plan unit redevelopment overlay district. Location, southwest of 33rd and Mason Streets. Are you Stephen?
Yep.
Okay, I thought so.
Stephen Held, 11506 Nicholas Street. I'm here on behalf of the developer and current owner of Town Properties LLC. Can you guys hear me all right? And I'm accompanied by my attorney, Mike Carter, and Kyle Hazy with E&amp;A. Our civil is here as well. Really, we're not really here to present, we know this is being laid over. We're on board with that, per the city's recommendations. We're here to listen to the concerns and objections, and I guess answer any questions the board might have, but, you know, we plan on coordinating with the neighbors after this to get a meeting set up and, you know, we want to get to a ready-
Have you had a meeting?
Yeah, we met with Leavenworth Neighborhood Association back in March, and discussed this project, so, yeah, we have had a meeting with the neighborhood. So that, that's all I have right now.
All right, thank you. Any other proponents wishing to speak? Seeing none, are there any opponents wishing to speak?
My name is Daniel Gutman, I'm a lawyer at Fraser Stryker Law Firm, address is 500 Energy Plaza, Omaha, Nebraska, 68102. I'm here on behalf of a number of members of the Leavenworth neighborhood, and I think we were going to have some people talk, I think for purposes of time, we will not do that, but if the board's okay, I'd like some of the members to raise their hand. Many of them took off work, many more had to leave because of time, but-
Thanks for coming down.
This is, this is obviously a very important issue to members of the neighborhood, and I think a couple of points are worth making. First, the neighborhood is not opposed to development of this piece of property. I think the problem has been, this project and this proposal has evolved over time. I think it started as an 18-unit townhouse, maybe, it has now evolved to a proposal for a 42-unit apartment complex. Really, the problem that we have is that throughout this evolution, there has been, I won't say an absence of communication, but I would say no meaningful communication with members of the neighborhood. A lot of this has been sprung on them last minute with very little to no notice, and that is the problem that we have. Now, I did just hear the developers say that they're willing to meet with members of the neighborhood, and that is a welcome development for us. So I, you know, my understanding is that this issue's probably going to be laid over, held over, but as these plans are reworked, we're simply asking the developer, developer be more considerate of how this development will affect the neighborhood, and just to be in contact with members of the neighborhood, and that's what we would ask, and I don't think anybody else is speaking, but I guess we'll see. Thank you very much.
Yes, thank you, Daniel. Yeah, if you want to come on down, that's all right, come on down, give your name and address. Appreciate you coming down.
Thank you, Jim Thompson, 1001 South 35th Avenue. May add a little bit to that. First of all, I'm on the NRD Board, I've been on the board 20 years. I certainly appreciate the role that you play, I respect for your decisions that you have to make. I'm going to add a little bit more, and I hope you got our letters, I'm going to assume you have, so I won't be redundant. I'll just highlight just a little bit, a couple of things. Community is what we do for one another, and you guys are in a community role, as I am, as an elected official. That was quoted by Garrison Keillor, if you don't know who he is, you should find out, he's a great guy. Anyway, you're aboard with the responsibility of what it is best for our community, is gauged on the input from development, by the way, I'm pro-development, but the right- But the right development, depending on what it is, particularly in my neighborhood. This change proposed by Uptown Properties is not good for our community. If you look around our neighborhood with the numerous houses that have been demolished, in this case, this property, there's only one house on it, when it was demolished in 2010, I believe. The land continues to lie vacant and the chopped-up appearance does nothing for our neighborhood. It's like a war zone, so there's no progress. But in this case, we're glad that progress by Uptown is being attempted. And we're kind of, we're for that when it's proposed as townhomes. The fact that now he's presenting a 42-unit apartment building is mind-blowing. I've been involved with that neighborhood, my neighborhood, the neighborhood of Leavenworth where this is central for 35 years. And we've talked to Mr. Held over time on other projects on 31st and Marcy. But then it got carried away. Our input has been minimal. I'm very happy to see, see the results of the letters that you have in front of us for this project because it obviously is very important. We implore you, in the reasons and all the letters, and maybe there might be more statements, to reject this change as a whole. It's just not, don't kick this can down the road if we have to address a 42-unit apartment again. I have no reason, I'm surprised Mr. Held didn't say, "Well, I changed it from 18 condos to 42 units because..." We never, I still don't know why. And here we are presenting to, you know, your board that it's a major, significant change. And we don't like it, of course. I don't know if there's any proponents of it. I'll leave it with that, it'll certainly be available for any questions that you might have. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Any other opponents wishing to speak? Seeing none, I'm gonna close the public hearing. Eric, well, any additional comments or questions from the board? Eric?
Do you want to bring Steve back up?
Oh, yeah, I guess I could. I think, come on up, Steve, I'm sorry. I, I guess the reason I didn't ask you to come up, and I should have. You'd already agreed to have more meetings.
Yeah, we're, I mean.
If you go forward with this.
We want to get to a resolution. I'm not coming back up until we, you know, I guess, met with them, have, you know, exhausted, you know, everything we can to get to something that works, so.
And there's difficulties with this site.
Yeah.
With the slope and everything, so.
Yeah. To answer their question, you know, I've exhausted, like, every ounce of me trying to make urban forced-out townhomes work. Yeah. Yeah, I love this area. And, you know, we were building momentum going into last year. You know, we got Legacy, the second biggest home builder in the state, to be our partner. And we were finally getting momentum going into last year, into February. We were getting financing for, put in place to basically do the 18 and COVID hit. And this stuff is, I mean, I could go for like, I mean, a week's worth of discussion on the difficulties, but that's where we're at. And, you know, I hate seeing it in the condition it's in. I just want to get something done. So, that's kind of where we're at. You know, if we gotta go back to it and it doesn't work for everybody, you know, we just want to see something get done. And townhomes right now, just, it's tough, it's really tough. I think if you ask anybody who's tried to do it, it is very difficult to do. To, to, to get the momentum and, I think, well, maybe at some point momentum will be in place, but, yeah. So, that's all I have to say on it.
Stephen, obviously you set up a meeting with city staff, I think, next week that will, that we can have these discussions, but maybe it's appropriate with, with so many of the neighbors here. Is the challenge of developing the townhomes, is it because the constrained nature of the type that you're building? Or is it the cost of the unit in the marketplace? And obviously, housing is, prices have gone up. So, I, I'm just curious if you wanted to elaborate a little bit more about the neighbors are here.
Well, we're having trouble with absorption, like, I, I can't even explain that because Omaha is going through like a housing crisis. And maybe that has changed, I mean, when we made the decision last, you know, we were literally getting our appraisal to finalize our financing, to get it put in place. And COVID hit and they backed out. And, you know, at the time, like, we couldn't even give Legacy the improved lots with the infrastructure for free. No compensation to get them to start building because they were concerned about, you know, the amount that they still had of inventory and in getting to a point where they could absorb, you know, there was just too many on the market at that time. Now, it, it does seem like I've been looking at Larry Jensen with SL Jensen. I know of their project, it does seem like I think they pretty much sold all of theirs.
Wait.
Yeah, and they're all sold too. And Legacy is building, there's four on that north lot that Legacy is starting on. We have an agreement in place with them. And then there's six just to the east that they're gonna be, so they're starting on 10 this year, but it's just another 18. I mean, if I could find somebody to, to work with us to get building on those, I, I, we have infrastructure in, I mean, utilities, public sewer. I would have to tear all that out to do apartments. So, it really isn't beneficial for me. We're just trying to get this thing done and move on from it. And, and, and we're, you know, I come from dial, you know, our, our guys are, you know, we're long-term owners of real estate. So, if we built this as apartments, you know, we're, we're in the long game. We rarely ever sell anything and, you know, we treat it as such. So, you know, we're, we're open to ideas and, and, you know, we want to make something work and we want to get something done, so. That's where we're at. Yep.
Thank you, Stephen. Eric?
Yeah, I won't get into too many of the details of the report, obviously. This is headed for a layover. As I mentioned, we are meeting with the development team next week to, to talk about our report and the development plan. Obviously, we have some concerns about the number of units and the density and, you know, the west side as it's adjacent to single-family residential homes in our four zoning. So, there's quite a bit to work through and continue to have those conversations, you know, with the neighborhood if, if they reach out or seek us out with questions. Several of them already have. And, you know, we're here to answer questions or to help them, also to answer questions and work with the development team. So, hopefully, we can come to an acceptable solution for everybody. But staff recommends layover.
Do we have a motion?
Motion to lay over.
We have a motion and a second, Lisa, will you please record the vote?
Pete?
Yes.
Sotolongo?
Yes.
Rosacker?
Yes.
Franklin? Moore?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Motion to lay over approved.
Agenda Item Number 21, Case C10-21-123. C8-21-114. Applicant Baxter Development. Request approval of a special use permit to allow assisted living in the R5 District with a waiver to Section 55206 height to allow a 42-foot-tall building along with approval of the MCC overlay district. Location, 445 South 193rd Street. May we hear from the applicant, please?
I'm Kyle Hazy with E&amp;A Consulting Group, 10909 Mill Valley Road, Omaha, Nebraska, representing the applicant Baxter Development. The parcel that we are discussing today is in the southwest corner of 192nd and Harney Street. It's an 8.6-acre lot that is currently zoned R5. We're requesting that be R5 with an MCC overlay and also a special use permit to allow assisted living within the R5 zoning. We're also asking for a waiver on the sign-square footage to allow 75 square feet of signage for the property and for the building height waiver to allow a 42-foot building. The building on that waiver, the majority of that height that goes over the allowed amount is for architectural features within the building. The assisted living building will be, consists of 154 units. That'll be a mix of assisted liv, of assisted living, independent living, and memory care. There's also a proposal for Phase 2 on the west side of the property to have some twin homes, duplex-type units where residents can live there. And then as their life progresses and moves in different stages, they can move into the assisted living or independent living within the building itself. The building will be, I mentioned, it'll be a three-story building at some, some portions, but there's also one-story and two-story components based on their uses throughout the building. They do have, besides the, the living component, they will have a pool, a medical, physical therapy, facilities on-site, salon services, restaurants, and a lounge area as well. So, I'll make myself available for any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Kyle. Any other proponents? Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Additional comments, questions from the board? Eric?
Obviously, Kyle gave a good review. Seems like a top-level facility based on the description and everything that we've received. He mentioned the height waiver, which can be incorporated into the use permit, staff is acceptable. There's no immediate adjacent from, you know, single-family residential, except, I guess, except for the new ones that are being planned directly southwest. As well as the signage, staff is supportive of a maximum of 75 square feet, whether that's in one sign or two signs on the northeast and northwest as monument signs. So, that would require a waiver from the Zoning Board of Appeals, but with a civic use on a large site like this, staff is generally acceptable to those increases in the sign code, which, the sign code really limits the amount of signage as, as we have several cases that, that kind of touch on that same article. There's a few items that we'll have to finalize before the special use permit goes to City Council, but staff recommends approval of the waiver to Section 55206 height to allow a 42-foot-tall building, approval of the MCC overlay district, and approval of the special use permit subject to the nine conditions in the recommendation report.
Do we have a motion?
Our motion for approval of the waiver to Section 55206 height to allow a 42-foot-tall building, approval of the MCC overlay district, and approval of the special use permit subject to the nine conditions in the recommendation report.
We have a motion and a second, Lisa, will you please record the vote?
Sotolongo?
Yes.
Rosacker?
Yes.
Franklin?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Pete?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Agenda Item Number 22, Case C8-21-120. Applicant Heather Kirk. Request approval of a special use permit to allow large group living in the R7 District with a request for reasonable accommodation. Location, 2052 and 2054 Deer Park Boulevard. May we hear from the applicant, please?
Good afternoon, Larry Rowland of the Guzman Law Firm for the applicant Heather Kirk as the Executive Director of Santa Monica Inc., nonprofit 501(c)(3), interested in addiction recovery for women. And this is an expansion to the Vinton Park area. 2052 to 2054 Deer Park Boulevard is zoned R7. We communicated with, beyond the scope, just because we've been down this road before and we want to make sure that all the neighborhoods and the neighborhood associations are aware of Santa Monica's presence in their neighborhood. So, the boundaries were 23rd Street to the west, Grover Street to the south, 20th Street to the east, and Spring Street to the north. We have communications with Deer Park Neighborhood Association and the South Omaha Neighborhood Association, Alliance, I apologize. Virtual House, a virtual open house was held on March 30th. There is no structural changes or landscaping changes or parking changes that need to be done to this facility. It's literally just a special use permit to allow for more than eight individuals to be able to reside at this specific location. That would expand the continuum of coverage that Santa Monica provides to its clients. We are in complete agreement with the recommendations, the requirements being requested by the Planning Board to allow for the special use permit to be approved. And welcome any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Larry. Any other proponents wishing to speak? Seeing none, are there any opponents?
Michael Marcello, 2025 Deer Park Boulevard. Not so much opposed to it, is a concern and some questions. Would this be a locked facility?
We'll, we'll bring him back up.
Okay. My question would be a locked facility and if it's, they're considering eight people per unit, that's 16 people. If it is not a locked facility and we're gonna have people driving and parking in the neighborhood, when that building was built, it was promised to be a developmental disabled unit and those folks were wonderful. However, they're, the employees of the unit deemed not to park in their small parking lot behind the building. They parked all over the neighborhood and they worked three shifts. So, they took up a sizable number of parking spots both on Deer Park Boulevard and on 21st Street, which creates a significant problem with backing out of some of the shallower driveways and things like that. That's, that's essentially where my concern is, that there's going to be a lot of extra parking on the streets, day and night. And you can imagine my alarm when we went from developmentally disabled to substance abusers looking out my front door. Thank you very much.
Okay, Michael, thank you. Any other opponents wishing to speak? Seeing none, close the public hearing. Larry, did you want to come forward and answer questions posed by Michael about if it's locked and employee parking?
And I do apologize, I don't want to get into the weeds too much, but addiction is a disability. It's just of a different nature and a different type, and that's why the reasonable accommodation request came with it as well. It will not be a locked facility. Individuals who are clients or residents there aren't allowed to have vehicles. So, the only vehicles would be those employees and, and those are more than, the spots on the property are more than sufficient to take care of their parking needs. I can't speak to why previous employees didn't want to park in a lot and parked on the streets, but again, there's enough parking spots to allow for all the employees to do that as well. The, the specific request for a, a large group home is something more than eight individuals. The state of Nebraska limits the number of clients that can exist in any one facility for Santa Monica's license to 16. That doesn't mean that if approved on day one, that there's 16 residents that would be moving into that facility. That's just what the ceiling is for the amount of individuals that Santa Monica can facilitate in any one building itself. If I'm missing anything, Heather?
Well, and Larry, just, just a point of clarification for, for the neighbor. These women are not currently using.
Correct.
Drinking, otherwise they can't stay at the program.
That is correct. And again, depending on where they are in the continuum of coverage, you know, they could be closer to the beginning end, which is them 30-plus days without, or they could be closer to the end, one year without. And again, it's just a more, expanding the continuum of coverage. We started in the Blackstone area and now we're beginning to move throughout the other parts of the city. And that's what has us in the Vinton Park area.
Okay. Thank you, Larry. Any comments or questions from the board? Eric?
Yeah, there are not too, too many items that, that I need to point out. Larry did a good job of summarizing the use. You know, there's just a few points of clarification with the operating statement that we'll need before proceeding to City Council, so Larry can get those items to us pretty quick. Obviously, this is a well-run organization that has history here in Omaha area and provides a, a very good service to people that are trying to recover and get back on their feet. So, staff is, is in full support, recommending approval of the special use permit to allow large group living in the R7 District with a request for a reasonable accommodation subject to the four conditions in the recommendation report.
Larry, thank you for, it looked like you passed your business card on, thank you for doing that, passing that on to Michael. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve the special use permit to allow a large group living in the R7.
R7 District with a request for a reasonable accommodation subject to the four conditions in the staff report. conditions in the staff report.
Second.
We have a motion, and second, Lisa, will you please record the vote?
Rosacker?
Yes.
Franklin?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Sotolongo?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Agenda item number twenty-five, case C seven dash twenty-one dash one-twenty-one. Applicant Malibu Properties LLC, request approval of a conditional use permit to allow indoor sports and recreation in the CC district. Location, six hundred north, two hundred tenth street. May we hear from the applicant, please?
Yes, good afternoon. Jeff Lake, two one zero zero eight Cumberland Drive, with Summit Development on behalf of the applicant. I've got a map here showing the property generally located at two hundred tenth and California Street. The West Dodge Expressway is just to the south off of this property. A little quick history on the site, we had a conditional use permit approved January sixth, I believe it was, for four basketball courts. Working through programming, there was a need to expand that, which is why we're here in front of you, the building, to expand the extra two basketball courts. Length in the building, which came to the east, removed a little parking, which kind of shoved the parking to meet code a little bit to the south. There were some comments in the report about a replat, lot one and lot two of G and G replat one, that was done in conjunction with the conditional use permit in January. Oddly enough, that replat, for some reason, never was recorded, so it does not exist from our record search. We had title pulled on that, so I believe that comment, I think, is accommodated naturally, and we can adjust our site plans to remove that lot line because it doesn't exist today. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
We've had multiple discussions upstairs about the UBT center-
Mm-hmm.
...and the lack of parking, how it gets to be on a weekend when you've got volleyball and basketball tournaments going on. As I understand it, correct, this formula for, this is a different parking formula, so there's going to be more stalls available for this unit than how we figured the UBT parking stalls.
Yes, that's correct. With the UBT, obviously, there's a separate use permit. Based on the size and the number of parking stalls, we were a little more flexible with, you know, due to the operating statement and what the client thought the parking needs were, and there is that flexibility for this use type with planning and public works directors having input and basically can determine the parking, is what the code says. Now, we obviously follow formulas, but we did relax those with the UBT. Now, this specific use permit before you is to a more stringent, just seeing some of the parking concerns and the gravel parking put, being put in place to accommodate the UBT center. So the use permit before you does have a more stringent, I'll say, parking requirement.
And like we've discussed before, we think it was the overlap between games that was causing the greatest amount of problems. The new formula that you're using or being, or sticking to the formula, and I don't, you may not be able to answer this, is that overlap considered in that formula?
Well, I guess I would, I would maybe more look to Jeff. My kids do not play basketball and volleyball at this time, and so I have not utilized these facilities, so I do not have firsthand knowledge of when the issues are. So I don't know, Jeff, have you learned some things with the centers, or?
Yeah, absolutely.
What do you think? Because obviously, the gravel parking is a concern, and we can't have that, we can't have parking on grass, so we need to get it figured out, and I don't know if this will alleviate, or if the operations will alleviate, just, you know, what are your thoughts?
Yeah, just want to make sure we got plenty of parking for this building, and I know this is separate from UBT, but maybe we can help with this building, the parking for UBTs.
No, that's a great point. A little history on that, too, it was a learning lesson, the first probably eighteen months of operation, and we've learned that the toughest months that we have, when we have volleyball tournaments going on, and we also have basketball, either leagues or tournaments simultaneous, created a little more parking demand in the months of January, February, and March, those were our roughest months. And the decision was made by the owners of that, let's park some vehicles on the frozen ground to the south, which we know is not compliant, which evolved into, let's put some rock down, since for whatever reason, every time there was a tournament, it thawed out, and created a lot of, lot of, lot of problems. We've also put parking management staff on during larger tournaments to kind of direct people around other parking lots. There's a number of properties that are owned by the ownerships of this facility across the street to the north and over to the east. And we've also kind of looked a little bit more at operations and how some of these games work. For example, basketball side has the opportunity to overlap game start times and league start times, so you don't have as big a peaking effect of cars going in and out. You still have a lot of the same parking demand, but the fight for those stalls isn't as extreme, and some of those stalls are getting used a little better versus people saying, I'm just going to park, you know, somewhere I shouldn't. Volleyball also, we've learned with that, too, to how to operate that. We've learned that a lot of the people stay all day, so we've tried to encourage people on the volleyball side to go park elsewhere on the properties to the north, found it's easier. My kids play volleyball and basketball in the facility, so I can relate to this, it's-
Jeff's taller than I am, sorry.
It's, yes. Pull this up like Mark needed it up. And the other thing we've done is we've kind of looked, so Eric mentioned, we've had a lot of conversations with staff, too, with indoor sports and rec not having really its own classifications, it's kind of defaulting back to the occupancy loads. We've kind of taken it one step further and started looking at kind of some of our, just different types of uses, and it's maybe a little hard to see, but we've looked at how many kids we assume are on a team, how many teams are on a court, you know, how those overlaps work as well with various sort of tournaments and league plays, and kind of put a matrix of what we think we need to have for parking. And ultimately, to accommodate that, this is a little bit, needs a little bit of cleanup yet, but the areas to the south, so this is the property we're considering here today, the balance of lot seven to the south, we do plan on building that out with the parking lot and more spaces that we'll own that are flex spaces that don't have weekend demand, so that we can sort of share the parking and not, you know, pave the earth, so to speak, and then still be able to accommodate the tournaments that we have. When this happens, from all of our calculations, we should be able to park everything without spill out onto adjoining properties. We also have some agreements that we've used from time to time with Metro College to be able to park in their lots and bus people over. Unfortunately, that hasn't really caught on, even though it's been offered and announced. So those are all things we're working to try to improve the parking and the traffic flows.
Can I ask you just a silly question? Maybe it's not, but it just seems that what you're here to get approval of right now, it just seems like the building, either the parking lot's on the wrong side of the building or the building faces the wrong way. I don't quite understand why it's that direction. All your parking's behind the building, and the only parking in front of the building is part of the other facility.
Yeah, so the parking, we have a couple of issues, I have a grading plan here, too, from a geotech, we used to, our conditional use permit that was approved in January, the building was actually located here, and there was two magazines of parking. There's, if you see that, I'll pull up the aerial, there's a sizable hill that drops up, and geotechnically, there are some issues with that hill, which prompted us to push the building up to the north and only have one magazine of parking in between them. We spent a lot of time talking about access, and do you have access on both sides of the buildings? And with the grade changes in the parking lot to the south, that creates some challenges. So our pathway from the lower parking lot will be up through this direction or around the building. From a security and an access and to be able to, unfortunately, I get to pay, I don't, ten dollars a weekend, a day, every time we go into this facility, to be able to manage both sides of those creates some functional problems for the site as well. And if you also look at other facilities around the region and country, for that matter, it's not uncommon to walk a quarter mile once you find your spot to get to those facilities. So whereas it'd sure be easier to put another, you know, access or entrance off the south side, I think functionally, it created some issues to why we felt comfortable, from what we've seen in other facilities, to take that extra walk around the building to the, to the front side. And it also lines up to the basketball side of Union Bank of Trust facility, the existing one, the doors are lined up, which is why that is presented in that fashion.
Jeff, can you bring up that other map that you just had with the parking?
The expanded map with the-
The expanded parking.
Sure.
So what's the proposal for that? That seems to be more of a solution, is to include all of that parking right now than to do it later, if that's your plan.
Yeah, I think some of it, until we have that plan finalized, and we did chat, and again, this is a little bit of, a little bit off-guard, but some things we have been talking about internally is, you know, do we set a timeline on that if we need to with this use permit of when this parking lot would be built? And without getting into too many, I guess I'll go ahead, the dirt, the reason that ridge and that hill is in there is this was a borrowed site when they built the West Dodge Expressway, and that dirt was mined out of the site, moved over there, and now, lo and behold, it's short of dirt. So we've got to, we've got to find dirt to fill up the areas for this parking lot, which why for this season, to get operational, the parking lot was shown on the piece of the property that's still kind of up high. You know, we expect it's going to take a year or so before we can get that dirt and find it at a place that's economical to get this filled and then build the parking lots to get the ultimate plan. So, I mean, we're comfortable with, if there's a two-year provision to get this thing done, that was something we knocked out or talked about, that if we had to, we can commit to as part of the use permit. But to get this done in a time fashion to open the facility for kind of winter sports season, we didn't have that time.
Yeah, and I just want to make sure that you're not, you don't have any other plans for any other building on that southernmost part of that, which you're showing here on the expanded parking, and you actually do convert that to parking, because that is a real issue out there. You know it, you see it when you're out there.
Correct.
It's a real issue, and it's going to become a bigger issue when you expand the facilities as well.
Yeah, absolutely. We're aware of it, too, and we had a lot of conversations with all kinds of folks early on, and it's really improved a lot over the last season and a half, two seasons. We haven't had a lot of complaints from neighbors. You know, it's still choked down a little bit at two hundred tenth in Cumberland, but, you know, the folks have figured ways to get out to the west and get to the Skyline Interchange, which is really pretty smooth.
That would be helpful to have some signage or something telling people you can.
Yeah.
Everybody always wants to go to the east.
We do, we have stand-up signs we put out there, it's on the tournament brochures, you know, easier way out. I mean, we're forecasting it every way other than, you know, making people sign a waiver when you come in, exaggerating, of course, but-
Yeah, use that intersection. The great people of Elkhorn kicked in a million dollars for that intersection with this-
Goodness.
What are those other three buildings? Thanks for reminding us, I appreciate that. What are those other three buildings future proposed to be?
Similar. Next year, probably.
But I mean, is, are they similar use?
Oh, similar use, yeah, flex space. And we are conscious of that, that we need that parking to operate the facility. I mean, you can't make guarantees, right, unless there's some sort of stipulation in this use permit of, you know, we've got to come back in, you know, or some other way you want to do that. We're comfortable with this is the plan, we're going to build, we need the parking for the facility.
Does that expanded parking absorb all the rest of the property to the south end or not? You're putting more facility, you're planning to put more facilities on that site?
More flex space that doesn't have weekend demand.
That doesn't have weekend demand.
Right. Weekday demand hasn't been an issue, it's the tournaments on weekends when they're overlapping in January through March that have been the biggest issue.
So I have a question for Eric, and that, on the, your recommendation report, under number five, it says, coordinating with the planning staff to ensure adequate parking. So my question to you is, the application before us with the parking shown, is that adequate?
The, it's hard, because there's this relationship, and, you know, so, and there's cross-access easements. The plan before you, the parking, we believe, is acceptable to a more stringent requirement and more parking than what we did with the larger UBT. We added number five, that specifically for the UBT, saying, we need to make sure that gets worked out. Because if, because if there continues to be a parking problem, basically, we're going to look at that original use permit, the UBT on the north, and say, we got to figure this out.
Okay.
So, you know, obviously, staff did not want to see of paving that's not used, and, you know, so we're willing to reduce that. Now, in hindsight, did we reduce it too much? You know, perhaps, or maybe just better operation if we can get there, you know, because we don't want to see of unused parking that's not utilized for the majority part of the time, but we can't have the parking on the grass or gravel. So, you know, if the applicant and the owner and the operators can continue to refine and hopefully keep this thing in compliance, otherwise, we're going to have to look at that north conditional use permit and say, we got to figure this out, bring that back, and whether that's more parking directly to the south of this new site.
So are these, are these both, are both properties identical ownership, then?
They are, they will be, yes.
Okay.
I say that on a yes, is lot one and lot two were scheduled to have different ownerships, but that replat wasn't recorded, so it's going to be that way until we bring in the balance of lot seven development plan.
Okay, so we can go to conditional use in the future and reanalyze what we did?
Yes.
To change the use of UBT?
Well, you can bring that back to have that discussion, that saying, parking is not adequate. Because there was one of the conditions of approval that, you know, continued to coordinate with staff, basically, to make sure that parking is acceptable. So we have a condition in place for that.
That's in perpetuity, so to speak?
Yes.
Then we have that, the city has that opportunity-
Yes.
-if the use is not adequate.
So if, technically, with a gravel parking lot, we could have brought it back and, you know, brought it back to the planning board and have that conversation.
Sure, but absent that, if they're doing everything they said they were going to do, and we're still having a problem, do we have an opportunity to come back?
Yeah.
Okay, so then I understand.
That would be on the original CUP, if we meet the parking on the new-
Or this, or this in the future, if we pass it as is, so.
Is the concern, sorry to keep asking questions, was it that we've got some non-compliant parking that seems like it satisfied the demand, now we're taking that out? You know, are we going to, are we opening up Pandora's Box? Is that kind of, if I'm hearing correctly, some of the concerns? Okay.
In the statement of proposed use that you talked about, the applicant, the owners have more properties and additional two hundred and twenty-five parking spaces are available. Where, what buildings or what parking lots are those in?
Sure, so the off-site parking that we have listed here, so seven twenty-five and two hundred, north two hundred and tenth, that's southeast corner of two hundred and tenth and Cumberland. We have forty stalls there that we own and manage, two oh nine one zero Cal, or Cumberland, that's just to the east of that, there are several weekend businesses in there, not the Putt Putt Place, but the building to the east.
And we got a letter, I think that insurance agency is to the east-
Yeah, IMS.
-complaining about using that parking lot.
That was early, I hopefully haven't seen anything lately, because that's all been-
I don't know when this was dated, let me-
Yeah, if that's recent, that's news to us.
Yeah, dated April twenty-ninth.
Okay. They have not reached out to us on that. We have, there's signage out there, too, for no parking, and I have not experienced or seen that happening, doesn't mean it hasn't.
I've seen that in the Amish furniture parking lot, no UBT parking, but, okay, I'm sorry, keep going.
Oh, you're fine. Christianson Lumber, it's across the street to the north of Cumberland, our office across the street to the north of Cumberland. California Circle is to the east of the site, and then there's some, so we, like Amish, for example, we sold them that building, and if we needed to, we could reach out to them for a lease for some existing spaces. We have not, it wasn't part of our agreement to sales, but I see that's a zero, but I have a line item for it. And then we have some additional parking and some flex space, two oh nine one zero Calif, so two nine one zero, two nine two zero, California Circle. So all that adds up to about two hundred and twenty-eight stalls.
What building is that, two oh nine twenty, California Circle?
The Flex Industrial Space, east of the Elkhorn Training Center, ETC.
Down in, okay.
Down, and then California Circle, the cul-de-sac, there's ability to park on one side of the street there, too.
Jeff, those, you have to cross the street to get-
You do.
And that, so to me, that becomes a safety issue, and that's nice that you have the availability of those parking stalls, but I think the real answer is to make sure that we have adequate parking on the site that you own, or that Malibu owns, because that's, you know, you always worry about people that cross the street, there's no crosswalks, there's no lights, right? They cross at their own risk. So I think the real answer is to make sure that there is plenty of parking for any time of the day or night or weekends for the activities that exist there, so.
Sure.
I think we all feel that same way.
Yeah. This needs to be solved on UBT and this new facility.
Sure.
Yeah, the parking.
No, we agree. Totally agree that needs to be efficient, not overparked and certainly not underparked. We're learning. And it's, I, I, from our experiences, it's been a lot better. The first 12 to 18 months was kind of rough. It's been three and a half years now, I think, something like that, give or take.
It's a great facility. Gets used a lot, especially on weekends, like you say.
Yeah, it does generate a lot of, lot of, a lot of people in the Omaha area. Does have some fairly sizable economic impacts that we're pretty proud of. And it's, it's been successful, but understand the concerns.
One last thing, where you talked about parking security or people. Have you always done that? Because I, I never, I've never seen anybody up there doing that, so.
Yeah, most, every tournament, there's one or two gentlemen out there kind of shuffling folks around. They're usually on a UTV, kind of moving people around from place to place. That, the first 12, 18 months, that didn't happen, but every larger event that, that takes place.
Yeah, I've just, I read that and I thought, I've never seen anybody out there. But, but you, you do have people out there.
Yes.
Any additional comments or questions? Oh, yeah. It's all gone.
Yeah.
Any other proponents? Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, closed public hearing? Thanks, Eric. I, I lost my place.
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't know if anybody was here. Yeah, so I, I mean, I've kind of said what I have wanted to say. Obviously, you know, our concerns are making sure that we're parking in appropriate paved parking. Staff recommends approval of the conditional use permit to allow indoor sports and recreation in the CC district, subject to the 13 conditions in the recommendation report.
I, just real quick, I liked the, the point that you made and, and Dave reinforced that point that if this doesn't solve it, we can bring this thing back, look at the, the use of UBT in this building and try to work it out. So I hope in the meantime, you guys are working on that plan to keep it, keep it going in the right direction. So we can alleviate that, Jeff. You got a nice facility, the UBT, and hopefully this will be nice, too, so. All right, do we have a motion?
Motion to approve the conditional use permit to allow indoor sports and recreation in the CC community commercial district, subject to the 13 conditions of the report.
We have a motion and a second. Lisa, will you please record the vote?
Franklin?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Pete?
Yes.
Sotolongo?
Yes.
Rosacker?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Motion approved.
That was the last case, wasn't it?
Thanks, Jeff.
Thank you. Uh, do we have a motion on last month's pre-meeting minutes?
Motion approved.
We have a motion and a second. Lisa, will you record the vote?
Moore?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Pete?
Epstein.
Sotolongo?
Yes.
Franklin?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Do we have a motion for last month's public meeting minutes? We have a motion and a second. Lisa, will you record the vote?
Yes.
Epstein?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Do we have a motion for adjournment?
Motion adjourned.
We have a motion and a second. Lisa, will you record the vote? Thanks, Matt.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Hey, is Jeff, does Jeff work for Willie now or just? They're together on development, I guess, so. Yeah, them two are together on there.